It's seven o'clock and we'll call the August 11, 2008 meeting of the City Council Redevelopment Agency to order. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, ever and ever, with justice and broad.
With that, we'll move on to item number three. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Counsel, any requests? Staff? Anybody from the public like to request a change to the order? Seeing none, the agenda stands and we will move on to item number four, which is a report from closed session that didn't happen tonight. It was canceled. So I'll take that report from you, Mr. Landzone. There's nothing to report. And with that, number five, Council Communications and Announcements. Councilmember Maude? Yes, Councilmember Royce?
As we started our meeting at seven o'clock, also in South San Francisco right now at seven o'clock, there's a service for a gentleman and a real hero named, some of you may know him, Joe Farnicki, who passed away this past week. He was involved in politics in South City for 25 years, was the mayor three or four times, a real gentleman. They called him Mr. South San Francisco. I actually went to college with him and knew Joe. So with that, I'd just like to show some respect for a great man and hopefully everything on that service will go well this evening for he and his family.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Grisilli?
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and nor do I. So with that, we'll move on to Public Comment, which is item number six. And this is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not posted on the agenda, not on tonight's agenda, and each speaker is limited to two minutes. I have one speaker card for this. Andre Carpio? It does work.
It's okay.
You can go ahead and start. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Okay, you're welcome to begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I live in Amreville. I am the owner and the manufacturer of a solar car, KARP. The solar car was stolen first in about June 2003. And when I found it, it was here in San Carlo. And when I wanted to recuperate the car on May 2004, the San Carlo police interfered in aiding and abetting the thief to get away with my car. My car has been stolen ever since and the suspect has disappeared with my solar car. I have filed numerous grievances and I have written letters to different officials and to the police and everybody has basically ignored my request and answering. I never got any answer from anybody. So I'm asking that the City Council pays close oversight to the activity of the police department and be sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen anymore. As far as the DMV is concerned, the police department usurped their authority in preventing me from recuperating my car. The DMV also informed me that the suspect had on two previous occasions tried to smuggle the car from me by forging on a pink slip. And when that did not work, they advised me that someone was trying to take over the ownership of my solar car. So this is a very important matter and I would like the City Council to see that it has a police department and the police department has facilitated to search individuals in which I'm not able to. So I ask the police department to do something like that to recuperate my solar car. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll just direct you to staff to thank you very much. I have another speaker slip without an agenda item number, and I believe that is Leb Kane? Is that not on tonight's agenda? Okay, great. Please come up.
My name is Leb Case and I've been a resident of San Carlos for 25 years. As you may be aware, last week was the final session for the adult volleyball program at Central Middle School, as this program was eliminated from the 2008-2009 budget. Between the elimination of the adult volleyball program, Adult Basketball League, and shutting off the lights at Burton Park, the City Council has significantly reduced the recreational opportunities available to working adults. I believe it's been disproportionate to those programs available to our youth and seniors. The adult recreational programs are my way of interacting with my community and getting exercise for my own well-being. Number of the adult participants have been trying to obtain specific information on how much these programs are costing the city, as we would like to figure out a way, either by increasing fees or through volunteering, how to keep these programs operating. To my knowledge, no one has been able to officially come up with the numbers for, say, the volleyball program. Unofficially, we've been told by city employees that many of these programs, including volleyball, not only cover their operational costs, but generate a surplus for the budget. I'd like to see the council recommend a review of these program costs to determine the burden these programs have on the budget. And if they are not creating a deficit, why the City Council has chosen to cut these programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to item number seven. Item number seven is the Consent Calendar, which are items that are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Any requests for removal?
Mr. Mayor, I do have, I'm proposing minor changes to the minutes of July 28th, page four, as submitted.
Okay, duly noted. If there's a forthcoming motion, we'll note that in the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the Consent Calendar, items 7A through H.
Second. Christine?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott is absent. Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number eight, which are Reports to Council, and item 8A, which is Strategic Plan Update, Action Strategies for Police and Fire Call Reducing Call Volume. Mr. Royce?
These are reports that have been submitted by both chiefs. If you'd like to have a short report from both of them and then they can address any questions you might have.
Councilor of preference? What do we have, a brief report?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council from the Fire Department, we submitted two items for you to look at, which was the actions for the strategies, reducing call volume, and some personnel cost-cutting effective plans. And as you see in your report, we talked specifically about, from the fire side, about our education and our reaction to emergencies. The one thing I did not mention in there that I feel you should be aware of in regards to the reducing call volume is that in our budget, in the fire budget, we do, under our master fee schedule, have in place a fee for false alarms, so that within a 90-day cycle, if we have two or more false calls, they're malicious in nature, then we do have the ability to go ahead and charge the individuals for that instance and for the repair of the system, so that we do reduce that amount of activity to that facility. And I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the fire chief at this point?
Not at this moment.
Not at this point? Great. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis, members of the City Council. As you recall, from the Strategic Plan Workshop, this was one of the tasks that council had asked staff to do. Obviously, the police department has gone through some cuts, as have all the departments in the city lately, and one of the ways to kind of counterbalance that was to look for strategies to reduce the call volume and hopefully help reduce the workload in the police department. So we went forward with this report and it includes a number of crime prevention strategies, including ways to deal with metal theft reduction, auto burglary reduction, and some strategies, for example, for traffic accident reduction and that. So that's it. I'll take any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, council. Any questions? Councilmember Maude?
Chief Roethlis, I was curious that we are pushing economic development along the industrial road corridor. Are we starting to see an increase in calls for shoplifting or anything else like that?
We are. We've had, you know, the San Carlos marketplace, we've been pretty busy there with shoplifting types of calls. With the new Ross store, we've been working, they've just been open, not for very long, and we've been working very closely with the Ross security staff well before the store opened, to do things that we can to kind of reduce the amount of time that we're going to spend there. So the answer is yes, we've seen that in that corridor.
Could you also speak just briefly to the metal theft? What's going on with that?
Metal theft is really an increasing crime, crime of opportunity. It's one that's skyrocketing across the peninsula and across the state, and there's a lot of ways and places that people can steal and strip metal. We happen to have a metal recyclery in San Carlos, and we stay in very close contact with the metal recycling in San Carlos, and they work very closely with us. What we're trying to do with them is to make sure that those people who basically trade in metal at that location are identified and that the metal recyclery is complying with the law as it relates to taking in metal. And we want to discourage basically the criminal recycling of metal, and what we see with the recyclery now is that they are working very closely with us and working within the law.
Just out of curiosity, I've noticed that some secondhand stores, pawn shops, things like that require identification, thumbprints, some other types of ID before business is transacted. Are we starting to see this with the metal recycling?
They are, and we make sure they do what they're supposed to do as it relates to identifying those who are turning in metal.
Great. Then I have one question for Chief Frye. It's not really addressed in the report, but we had talked previously that significant call volume that we have is for EMS first responder. I was curious if at some point in time, we may have a discussion where we could compare and contrast our EMS first response versus that of South San Francisco, which has their own ambulance. I'd be kind of curious to talk about costs and how that works. The folks in South San Francisco are bragging that they're saving money. I'd be kind of curious about that, but would love to have that discussion with you and talk about it in the future.
Happy to do that. I do know that South San Francisco does augment that service by about a half a million dollars a year through their budget, but I can gather that information and give a report to you on that in the future.
That'd be tremendous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Chief Roethlis answered my question about Ross. The only other one I had was, have you seen any significant resource need for cellphone usage with new laws? How's that going in town?
With respect to the traffic?
Yes, with traffic, yeah.
Well, we're about ready to kind of start a more proactive campaign looking for that. I have to tell you from what I've seen and what officers have seen, people are pretty well behaved right now with respect to that, so far. So we're seeing at least a good compliance rate with the law in that.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Grisilli?
No, I'd just like to compliment both chiefs for a fine report, and once again, we're very blessed to have both of you and the staffs that you have and the people that are working in public safety. That's, I mean, I know it's a little gratuitous to say that, but the point is--
No, that's actually what the mayor's supposed to say at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, that's okay.
Let me yield my time to the mayor. Excuse me.
I'd like to thank both of you for this report. I'm just kidding. It is, we appreciate you guys standing on top of this. Love to hear maybe next year, six months, if, how the efficacy of reducing call volume. I know it's an ongoing effort for everybody, but one of the reasons to strategically identify this is to also measure our success at it. So thanks for the reports. They're complete, and we are extremely lucky to have you guys. Thanks very much. No tongue-in-cheek meant. All right. With that, we will move on to item number 8V, and that is a report on the community-wide greenhouse gas inventory for the city of San Carlos.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager and the Green Programs Coordinator. As you will recall from our report back in May of 2007, we've been on a journey to enhance the city's programs in the area of green initiatives and climate protection. You've received two annual reports, one in May of '07 and one this past May. As you know, one of the first tasks that we embarked upon was creating a greenhouse gas inventory, both on a community-wide level, which you'll be hearing tonight, and then also a second one for city operations, which is now underway. The community-wide inventory that you're here tonight was funded by the Bay Area Air Quality Management Board and also by the CCAG Group. So this is, all of this work is done at no cost to the city. The only cost was some staff time that I put in, as well as the work that you're about to hear tonight from PMC. With us tonight is Michael McCormick from PMC. Michael, in addition to doing this, helping us finish up this report, is also going to be leading the effort in the preparation of the next step in this process, namely a climate action plan, and he'll be working with Deborah Nelson on that project. So with that, let me introduce Michael and he'll take you through the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present the results of the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Just going to run through here for a few minutes, probably 10 to 15 minutes, to give you a brief summary of the report. The entire report is, of course, in your packet, but also on the website. So I'm not going to go through much detail at this point. So basically, I want to summarize what a GHG greenhouse gas emissions baseline report is, and I'm also going to try and enunciate all of the acronyms as well. It's basically an accounting of the amount of greenhouse gases emitted to or removed from the atmosphere over a specific period of time. It provides information on activities in the community regarding emissions that produce emissions. It's also an information document for policymakers, and it also allows scientists to use the inventories as inputs for their various models. So we're focused on creating a baseline at this point to inform all of these processes. Creating the inventory, we used a number of different data sources. ICLI and the Silicon Valley Partnership were integral to collecting the data. We summarized it in the report and have been working closely with ICLI to clarify the information and--
Mr. McCormick, excuse me. ICLI?
ICLI, Local Governments for Sustainability. Yes, sorry about that. Pacific Gas and Electric provided the electrical information and also gas usage. MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, provided transportation information. The Integrated Waste Management Board, of course, provided information on waste, as Caltrans, highway, and of course, city records have backed that up and will also inform the next process, which is the municipal-specific inventory. Timing of the data, you'll notice that the data is from 2005. The state data is based in 1990. The reason for that is the 1990 data is much more general in nature. 2005, we have a lot better data, a lot more specific, a lot easier to collect. In 1990, we have a general idea of what was going on throughout the state, but in 2005, we're able to get a lot more specific, and so we can develop emissions reduction factors around those and actually be able to quantify the outcome. For waste data, we did use 2003 and '04 data from the statewide waste characterization study, so that's a little bit behind, but it was the best available data at the time. Going to briefly run through the methodology. The energy and waste-related activities throughout the community were summarized in the report using all these various sources of information. The greenhouse gas inventory protocol that we're doing for this particular report is the community-wide assessment. The city facilities and activities is actually folded into this, although it's not broken out separately. So the second report is actually going to break out each of those individual municipal emission sources separately from this, but this inventory does include the emissions related to city activities. Results are conveyed in metric tons. It's a climate change, greenhouse gas emissions standard that's used throughout the world, so we use metric tons instead of English tons. So that's 2,205 pounds. So it's one pound of carbon dioxide can fill about 120 party balloons, so that gives you an idea of the amount of emissions we have. So a basic overview of the results was very consistent with what we've been finding throughout the rest of the Bay Area and much of California. Results can vary through the rest of the United States, but the Bay Area specifically, we're finding the transportation is about half of the emissions in the community. Electric generation and natural gas is about 45 percent. And waste, since there are no landfills within San Carlos, waste was actually 5 percent. Some communities with landfills can have a much higher percentage because of the methane emissions. So some of the findings and report goals. The community sector emissions, again, are the primary emissions in San Carlos. Municipal emissions are only about 1 to 2 percent, up to 5 percent, but in this case, we're anticipating it's going to be about 2 percent, once we finalize the collection of that data and are able to quantify it. And it really shows the need to involve businesses and residences, because about 98 percent of the emissions are related to the community rather than just the government activities. So in order to get buy-off from the community, going out and doing the stakeholder involvement is going to be really important. The baseline report's going to inform the selection of the reduction targets that we're going to start, and I'll show you the timeline in a few minutes here, but that'll be starting up next week. It'll inform the selection of possible reduction measures through the Climate Action Plan process, and it'll also occur concurrently with the San Carlos General Plan update. And this is something special that we have the ability to do at this point in time. The Climate Action Plan done by itself without the support of a general plan and a general plan EIR is a great document, but it can sometimes sit on the shelf and not be utilized to its full effectiveness. We have the ability with this to incorporate it into both the general plan and the general plan EIR. These are some of the results, emissions by sector and source. Sector is basically the use, so residential uses, commercial uses, industrial, et cetera. And then sources of the emissions are actually what the fuel source is. So, for example, by source, highway travel diesel is about 1 percent of the total. You can see it makes up a very small percentage. And I need to enunciate that the estimates for some of these emissions are based on much larger data sets. So this is really a general overview. It's not specific, although you see ones and twos and fives in there, it's pretty hard to estimate down to that level with the type of data that we have available to use. This is just a graphical representation of the emissions by sector. The highway travel component down here in the lower left, that's somewhat problematic for the city because it's not controllable by the city. So although you see 27 percent there, that's a lot of pass-through traffic. So that's one of the challenges the city will face as we move forward in this, is how to delineate those things that the city has control over and those things that the city has no control over, but still should quantify to maintain their records. And this, again, is emissions by source. Again, since there aren't any landfills, you see a very low waste decomposition factor here. Natural gas, again, transportation is about 50 percent. So through these various data collection efforts, we were able to estimate the per-capita emissions. So there's a total of 229,193 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent that we've estimated are emitted by the community of San Carlos. With 28,105 people as of 2005, through the Department of Finance estimates, we have about 8.15 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per person, which statewide is pretty good. Statewide average is about 12. Most communities are running with anywhere between 7 and 14 to 18 in California, and United States is about 24. So clearly, we're moving a little bit further ahead than the rest of the country. A lot of that is based on the PG&E efficiency, the efficiency of the grid here in California. So the goal of the baseline report is basically to identify emission factors that can be influenced by the city, rather than all those emissions that one person creates. For example, a flight to Europe to go for a weekend jaunt would not be included in this. This is just emissions that are created within the city limits that the city would have control over. There's a few other comparisons I've put up here, but I think I already walked through those. It's important to know that the per-capita emissions numbers, it's not real easy to relate to the other communities, because the data collection capabilities of the various other communities, the methodologies they use to estimate those per-capita emissions, and the data available at that time can vary. So depending on what kind of methodology they used, it can be problematic to compare across the board. Now that we have a general background of what our emissions look like at this point, we can move forward with taking a look at how we can reduce these emissions community-wide. This is the goal of the Climate Action Plan. We have a couple of fundamental questions that we have to go through to look at how we can affect change. Basically, how is San Carlos affecting climate change right now, these various different sectors? How do they affect it? Residential business, city government, what kind of transportation can be influenced, mass transit, density of housing, neighborhood, commercial, these type of things that might have an impact on climate change? And how can San Carlos be affected by climate change? Sea level rise, water availability, change in rainfall, these type of things all need to be considered. And then finally, the big question is how San Carlos can address climate change locally? How can we affect climate change from a local perspective? There's all these great goals at the state level, and the United Nations has goals at the world level, but how can San Carlos affect it locally? And one of the great benefits of the way the city's going about this is that it is going to be integrated into the general plan and into the general plan environmental impact report, which allows us to have extensive data collection and process. So this baseline report that's been presented tonight, there's actually going to be data updates as these reports through the general plan become available. So if this requires some tweaking of the baseline report, it'll allow more accurate representation of the baseline emissions. So we have extensive data collection, all the advisory committees are formed, stakeholders are engaged, the community's involved in the process, and so we have a number of benefits. Landies decisions are being considered through the general plan process, so we have the ability to look at the emission reduction measures that could be proposed, alternative transportation planning, the mitigation effectiveness. So typically, emissions reduction measures wouldn't be associated with a policy program document as large and expansive as the general plan. Being able to fold these policies, programs, goals into the general plan and also mitigate for climate change through the general plan EIR makes for a much more defensible document. It's a much stronger document, allows a level of defensibility for both the city and project applicants in the future, because there's a consistent approach through the community and there's information to back it up. And that pretty much summarizes my presentation of the baseline report. Of course, I'm available for questions. This is the aggressive timeline we have. We want to run along with the general plan, so the Climate Action Plan is moving forward with a number of public meetings pretty close together, and hopefully we can get this through and integrate it into the general plan, general plan EIR, in a pretty efficient manner. And so we're looking in January to have the Climate Action Plan before the City Council associated with some of the general plan elements.
Great, thank you very much. Council, question? I have some, a public comment. Do you want to take public comment prior to questions? Okay, I have one speaker card on this pet bell. And then if you'll be so kind, we'll ask you back to the podium for questions. Thanks.
Suzanne Emerson asked me to ask a question, and I don't think I know enough about her question, because it was, why isn't natural gas included? The effects of natural gas, and it looks like you rolled that in with electricity. Are you going to break that out separately at some point, or are you just using PG&E? I'm not allowed to, you're not supposed to answer me. I'm just supposed to ask you a question.
Why don't you just pose the question, Ms. Bell?
And politicians learn to smile and nod and not say anything. But I have another question. Is El Camino Real a highway? Is El Camino Real a highway or a city street? Because it's a state highway, but I want to know which category they're putting in.
That was going to be one of my questions as well. We'll find out shortly.
Oh, good. That one's good answered.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Counsel, if you could, wouldn't mind approaching the podium again, and we'll go questions. Councilmember Ahmad?
Sure. I guess one of the questions I had, I'm curious where SBSA fits into this. I see absolutely no accounting for it whatsoever.
Brian?
To clarify, are you referring to SBSA or SBWMA?
I'm talking about SBSA.
Okay.
We've got, by my calculations, we produce roughly 60 tons of CO2 equivalents per day from the methane production from sewage. That's not entirely San Carlos, but it's San Carlos, Redwood City, Belmont, and whatever else goes there. So a portion of that is ours. I do not see it accounted for, so I'll pose that question. I'll just go through a couple of them. In your per-capita emissions, I just wanted a clarification probably for the record because this is going to go into the record. It looks like you've abbreviated per-capita as million metric tons, which would probably freak people out because they're walking through charcoal at this point. So it's not millions of metric tons, it's metric tons. In terms of how you calculated electricity, did you, I'm curious, what was the source that you were assuming? Was it coal fire, nuclear power? What was the power source that you used to determine the carbon footprint for the electricity? And I'll hold there for right now.
Would you like me to respond to her questions as well?
No, no, why don't you just go ahead. I'm sorry, yeah, if you want to address those questions as well, that's fine.
Okay. I guess the first question was, where are the natural gas emissions considered? And industrial, typically, there are some privacy issues with obtaining information regarding industrial operations. So it's very difficult to gather accurate information on that. So the electrical generation is actually estimated, the natural gas is folded in with the commercial. So they are addressed, but it's not addressed in the column under industrial. And that's one of the clarifications we're going through with ICLI, who has primary authority over that data that they collect.
If that's a privacy issue, is that an estimate then?
That is an estimate. This entire baseline inventory is an estimate. We really don't have figures to have a hard number.
Okay.
And is El Camino Real a state highway? My understanding it is not, but I can, well, it is a state highway, but my understanding is that it's, it is a state highway, I know. But my understanding is that it's not, it's not considered a state highway for the purpose of the calculation. I will verify that with ICLI and.
So to your impression, it's part of the residential traffic, not the highway traffic number?
My understanding is it's part of the, within the city way, roadways, yeah.
Great, thank you.
SBSA emissions, this is actually something that has come up a number of times because there is a difficulty in estimating methane emissions from sewage treatment plants. So this has been something that ICLI has suggested not be included in an inventory, and we can certainly reconsider that. But we can talk with ICLI about the possibility of including that in their data collection efforts, but that was not included in this baseline inventory. You're correct.
Okay.
Per-capita emissions, yes, it's not million metric tons. There's an extra M on there, so I apologize for that. And for the PG&E grid, it's a, PG&E gave us the numbers. We asked for the information, and we don't have a solid breakdown of where those sources lie, but it's the overall California PG&E grid, not the sources of energy, electricity that come from outside the state. So that's one of the reasons why the grid looks very green comparatively to the rest of the United States. California gets a good chunk of its electricity from outside of California.
I'd like to follow up with just two quick questions. The first one, I'll just ask for information to be provided. There's an emission factor of metric tons of CO2 equivalent per vehicle mile. If at some point somebody could provide how that was formulated, that would be great. I understand the calculation of a gallon of gas, 19.8 pounds of carbon, but how the calculus was done to say per-vehicle mile strikes me as interesting. So I'd like that number. Second of all, and I guess this actually goes to our city attorney, how does this inventory play with AB 32? Where are we going? Are we, how is this law telling us what we need to do, et cetera?
Where we are right now with AB 32 is, there is a draft scoping plan that affects residents, businesses, and government agencies. San Carlos, along with a number of cities, have been invited to comment on that, and actually, the first workshop is next week. So we'll know better in a week or so exactly what it looks like. But from what I've seen to date and in talking with the League of California Cities, most of the goals, most of the requirements for San Carlos being a city without an electric or water utility, those are directly affected by AB 32. We have what are called goals and targets at this point. We don't have firm mandates. The other thing that we're waiting for, and I think Michael alluded to it in his report, is there is no state-accepted way at this point of calculating the 1990 baseline numbers. As you probably saw in the staff report, we had a graph and some targets that the governor has set for statewide, you know, everybody, if you will, targets. And a lot of those are expressed in 1990 equivalents. Because 1990 was so long ago, there are very few records of any of the agencies that Michael listed. For example, we can't get that kind of data from PG&E or from the State Waste Board, et cetera, et cetera. Some cities that have gone ahead of us have come up with various estimates of going back to 1990. We're kind of waiting for what the state methodology is, and we'll use that. So at this point, I think I would describe the AB 32 implications on San Carlos as the state is asking us to continue to do the sort of programs we are and more, to continue to strive to bring the emissions down, but we don't have a firm, rock-solid mandate or target, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, I would just offer that one of the things we are going to see in AB 32 is probably cap and trade. This inventory could likely play how our cap as a city is going to be established for the state that will put certain allowances of carbon emissions for the city. Obviously, if we are better at becoming greener, then we could have excess credits that the city could in turn sell, and that could be a revenue source. So one of the things that is interesting in looking at this inventory and further looking at our green plans is there is money for the city if we are doing a good job being green. So I'll just offer that and yield back to the chair.
Right, and to that point, it's probably good information for us to know what SBSA is emitting on a methane level because whether or not there's, if it's calculated within our city limits, then it's going to be something that we're going to need to deal with in the long run to be accurate. So there may be certain things that are considered regional fractions of perhaps, but I don't know how ultimately the math will be done on either AB 32 or, but it'd be good for us to have an idea of what that is and perhaps inform the legislatures how we would like to see that fraction play. So it'd be great to calculate that to that point. Good?
Other questions? Yeah. Michael, just one question. On your emissions by source, it shows that diesel for both highway and city was, it's only about 3 to 4 percent of what gasoline. Is that purely driven just by the volume of diesel versus gas that's used, or is there something different with emissions?
Those were the estimates provided to us by MTC. It's their estimate based on their understanding of the users of the highway system.
Okay, but a gallon of diesel and a gallon of gas are equivalent close enough for emissions?
Yeah, that's why they're put together with carbon dioxide equivalents. So there's an equation that equates the emissions of each of the different fuels to make sure that they're compared across the board in a consistent manner. So for example, methane is 20 times more reactive in the atmosphere in carbon dioxide. So it's weighted heavier in a carbon dioxide equivalent.
Great, thank you.
I avoided all science classes in college, so I'm not quite sure what you said in most of your comments, but I think it's right, whatever it is. It looks to me like if we just stop driving and don't use our PG&E, we're done. We're finished. We're aces. Of course, our society would have a bit of a transition. Obviously, I made a couple of jokes. It's not a funny thing. We know what we have to do. Just a quick question. I realize it's very difficult to gather this information. Is this basically a two-and-a-half-year lag on all this? From now until the end of time, we're going to have a two-and-a-half-year lag?
Well, one of the reasons why it's 2005 data is so that we'd have a platform throughout the Bay Area in case, as we move forward, a more regional approach develops. This way, all the various cities and municipalities in the area have 2005 data. And there is most 2006 data available, but however, in the spirit of keeping this platform at the same year, all the cities in the area are doing 2005.
So approximately, again, I'm just maybe more into the numbers. So we have 2000, is it about a year, year-and-a-half lag of getting information then? I mean, in reality?
It really depends on the data. It can vary by each different sector, by each individual agencies that collecting the data. A year lag would be appropriate and reasonable.
At least, if we're lucky. But it could be a year-and-a-half or two-year lag, depending on, like you said. Again, I was just curious because I always, when you look at things in 2008 and you're thinking 2005, well, gosh. But at least hopefully, we can start identifying that, again, even if we started today, we won't see the benefits for a few years, we won't be able to monitor, use the metrics for them because we won't know what they are for a couple of years after that.
Can I just add to Michael's comments through the chair? I think Vice Mayor Griselli, you have hit upon one of the challenges in this whole arena, which is the raw data to make the calculations. The city did join ICLI last year. They do have a software tool, as Michael indicated, that has the factors built in. So if you can gather the data from the different sources, you can make these calculations. I think all of this is kind of a new journey for the cities. I think the cities in Silicon Valley like San Carlos are probably leading the parade, not only in the state but in the nation. You know, we recently got interviewed by a French magazine for a story that's going to run in October, and I continue to be amazed at how much fascination there is with what we're doing around not only the area but the world. But in the case of the data collection, one of the discussions we're having with the airboard is to create a website that could be used for the cities and counties in the Bay Area and ultimately the state to do the sort of calculations that you're talking about. And our vision is very similar to what you're raising here, Vice Mayor. And that was to say that once we all learn how to make these calculations, we're going to need a continuing flow of the information so each year or every other year, as we see fit, we can keep this process going. And so the airboard and MTC and Caltrans and PG&E and the other key players are working on that with the help of A-BAG and other groups. So we don't have an answer to that yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, that's actually generally what I want to talk about a little bit as well, which is that I realize this is developing science, and that's, so it almost becomes art at certain points. There's a lot of estimates that go into it, and it's always the accuracy of the estimates that we're all sort of, you know, we're a small city in the middle of a large region. How do you actually capture that? But there is some data, and I guess it was hard for me to pull out some of that data, but I think we could. For instance, like just hybrid car sales in San Carlos over the last three years. I mean, that's probably data we can go find. That's probably data that should be in these estimates. And the difference between 2005 and 2008 is, I don't know if I would go so far as to say dramatic, but it's probably significant. So it might be interesting, working with ICLI, to try to pull out trackable data that we can get real numbers for, that we can get the most accurate update possible going into the General Plan process because that's a document that's going to sort of take a snapshot in time. So the degree to which we can easily found data that can be maybe put into some of the modeling, I think would be worthy effort, just because 2005, there's so much more consciousness in the last three years. So my guess is that would be worthy effort.
And if you don't mind if I add to that, the data from 2005 is actually going to be the base for the emissions reduction target that'll be coming up.
Yes.
So it will be, everything's been implemented since 2005 that'll be factored in there. So you'll get credit for those greening activities that have occurred in the past couple of years.
And then the, of the estimates, are they, it was also hard for me to tell in the report, how much, are those regionalized to Bay Area-specific or are they, are some of those statewide numbers? In other words, you know, more rural area numbers versus suburb?
Which estimates are you referring to?
Well, just for instance, some of the estimates about different traffic and so forth, is that, are those based on regionalized Bay Area numbers or?
Right, those were collected from MTC, and they're estimating, they're estimating city-specific based on the regional collection.
I see. And on the commercial level, some of the privacy issues, those are, how are those estimated then? On a more of a statewide basis? I'm just trying to get how specific, how accurate is the information?
Well, PG&E will fold the industrial numbers into commercial, just like the city operations is folded into commercial. So all of those are lumped together under commercial whenever there's a privacy issue.
So those are actualized to the city limits? Great, okay, good enough. Any other questions, staff? Great, thank you very much for your report. Really appreciate it. All right, and with that, we will move on to item number 9A, which is considers, a consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute agreement with Tramatola LLC for Pre-Electoral Strategy Strategic Plan and Public Information Services on proposed city general revenue measure.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. As you will recall, in February, the city council received the annual mid-year budget report, and during that time, the council received information that the city's financial condition in the general fund continued to deteriorate. And the result of that, the council appointed Mayor Lewis and Vice Mayor Griselli to a city revenue subcommittee to look at opportunities and options the city has going forward to address this problem. As part of that process, the full city council approved an agreement with Tramatola LLC to conduct a survey of 600 registered voters in San Carlos to see community attitudes towards addressing the problem. You received a report at your May 12 council meeting about the results of this community-wide survey. What it indicated was there was a strong satisfaction with city services even after the eight years in a row of cuts in the general fund. It was over 90 percent, a very high ranking indeed. There also was a strong interest in preserving specific services, including fire, park and rec, police, and street maintenance. Those are the highest, although there was strong satisfaction for almost every city service surveyed. And finally, there was strong citizen preference for a local option, sales tax, a half-cent sales tax, rather than the other option specified, which was a 5 percent utility user tax. When a 10-year sunset was included, the difference in preference was 66 percent in favor for the sales tax versus 54 percent for the utility tax. Because these were general revenue measure proposals, the council was presented at the May 12 meeting with two options. That was to put these matters on the ballot in November 2008 at a non-municipal election, which would require a finding of fiscal emergency, or two, to put this on at the next municipal election for a majority vote in November of 2009. At the last council meeting, the council vote was to not proceed in November of 2008. And so now, we're coming to you tonight to talk about the next step in the process. You'll recall when we presented the Tramatola contract to you in, I believe it was March, that there were two phases to the work. The first was the initial survey, and the second was the educational information work and also a second survey closer to the election. Staff has worked with the Tramatola, and TruNoth folks to rework the proposal so that rather than the Phase II work ending in a November '08 election, it now is targeted for a November '09 election. As we talk to other cities around the Bay Area who have similar revenue measures, some of which are moving ahead for this year and some of which are moving ahead for next year, we find that many of the cities are using a 12-to-18-month planning horizon in their revenue measures. And even though it doesn't seem to be the case, if we look ahead to November '09, we're already in that time window. So what staff is bringing to you tonight for consideration is to take the money that you've already appropriated for these services and apply it to this revised Phase II proposal for educational services and also a second tracking poll aimed at a November 2009 ballot measure. So that's the report. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, council. Do you, I have some public speaker slips, but why don't we take questions for staff first? Any questions? Yeah? Vice Mayor Griselli?
No, wait a minute.
All right, why don't we take a public comment? I have one speaker card from Pat Bell. I have one speaker card from Pat Bell.
I think we spend way too much on consultants in this town, but I strongly support this, hiring these consultants. We've tried doing it ourselves, and we don't have a terrific record. And Mr. Weiss has said that, when he goes out and talks to various groups, he gets a lot of support, once they understand what's really going on. I witnessed this at a G-PAC meeting, where he spoke to the G-PAC, and I had heard members saying, "Well, we just have to cut the cost of government." And when he was finished, the same people said, "So we need so many million dollars, and we need it by this time, and how are we gonna do it?" And I think that's what we need, is to really inform the public that we have cut the cost of government, we've cut it severely, that's a knee-jerk reaction, "Well, they must be spending too much money." Well, we gotta get them somehow in the tent, so they can see what's really going on, and why it's going on, if we don't get as much sales tax, and all that, blah, blah, blah. There are very few of us who have heard that talk, and we gotta get the word out. At the G-PAC speakers' meeting, a couple of Saturdays ago, Don Whedon mentioned Planning Shorette, which is a group of people coming together to talk about a specific subject, and really getting educated about it. And it's often done around city planning. And I thought, that's what we need in San Carlos, but we need it about everything, not about, just about city planning. I talked to Mr. Weiss about a citizens academy, like Redwood City has done, where you get people in and they learn, you know, they get a behind-the-scenes tour of the police department, blah, 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 blah. But they also really know how their town works, and I think that might be a good way to invest the next year.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Bell. All right, with council, if there's no further discussions or questions for staff, I'll entertain a motion. And I guess I, you know, would say, and I'm sure council would all nod in agreement, that the public education effort needs to be thorough, and I've experienced a similar thing as Mr. Weiss, when people understand the true dynamic of the situation.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize city manager to execute agreement with Tramatola LLC for pre-electoral strategic planning and public information services on potential city general revenue measure.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one comment. One of the things, I think, to the previous speaker's comment, it was subtle, what we did last week, but there was a point, people have said, "We need to cut the cost of government, and we need to live within our means." At our last meeting, a couple of things happened. Again, I say it was subtle, our street sweeping contract went up by 50 percent. Wasn't a choice, we have to do it. I looked at staff and said, "Is there any way around this? Can we cut the number of miles?" Nope, it's mandated by the state. So with a gun to our head, we watched a contract go up by 50 percent. We further had a discussion from SBSA, talking about what sort of fiscal implications we were gonna have. There were two headcount in there. Again, why are these headcount in there? The state has mandated that we have to do reporting. We don't have a choice, we had a gun to our head, we have to hire these people. There was also an additional quarter million dollars of capital expenditure. Do we want it? Nope, the state has mandated that we have to get the equipment to do the mandatory reporting. So in the span of, you know, roughly 30 minutes of a city council meeting, we all of a sudden saw several hundred thousand dollars of liability get stuck onto our budget. It's not something we wanted, it's definitely not something we asked for, but this is how we have to kind of recognize, and I'll use the analogy for the previous speaker, let's point the arrows outside the tent. It's not the guys inside who are trying to bloat city government. So this is all hands on deck, I stand by my description of a fiscal emergency at the last meeting, and we'll continue to act as such.
Point well taken, thank you. Christie?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number 9B, which is consideration of weekly residential food scraps and plant materials collection services, and discussion of impact of this and other solid waste programs on 2009 solid waste rates.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. You will recall that earlier this year, we came before you to have a discussion about enhancing the city's recycling and solid waste program with additional services for organics collection on a weekly basis. This item came before the SBWMA board, the 12 agencies, in January. Ten of the 12 agencies elected not to pursue this program because of its cost, and as you see in the report, we'll get into it in a minute, there is a significant cost to it. However, two agencies, San Carlos and Burlingame, expressed an interest in bringing it to their council. We did bring it to you in February, and both this council and the Burlingame council asked for further review and further analysis, which we have now done. As you'll see in the report, we have tried to bring down the cost of this program somewhat by some substitutions. We're now talking about used trucks versus new trucks, and we've done some other tweaks in terms of costs. We've been successful in negotiating with Allied Waste to reduce their operating profits and margin a bit in this initial proposal. So we believe at this point, that what you have in front of you is the lowest-cost way to do this on a short-term basis. And I should add, at this point, that one of the things that, from the staff perspective, the council needs to give us direction tonight on, is the timing of this service. It should be noted that the organics weekly collection is part of the January 2011 RFP for collection that's going to be discussed later this month. So this community is going to receive organics service on a weekly basis in January 2011. The question is whether the council feels strongly about this particular service to move it up two years. And the reason that these costs are a little bit higher than they will be in 2011 is because we're amortizing costs over 24 months, rather than 10 years. So something to think about. As far as reaction to this proposal, I would say that my experience has been, it has been mostly positive in the community. I think there are two groups in particular that seem most interested in this program. One are the folks that are concerned about the whole green programs and climate change, as you heard our earlier speaker talk about, the fact that methane is a rather significant component to greenhouse gases, and a program like this, which results in organics being diverted to compost, would have a significant effect in improving that. And then the other group, interestingly, are folks who recently moved to San Carlos. And my experience in talking to the latter group is that these folks often have had organics weekly pickup in other parts of the Bay Area, if they've moved, say, from Oakland or San Leandro, the East Bay, or other parts of the Bay Area, and questioned frankly, why it's not here. As I note in the report, it's also the case that garbage rates in San Carlos and in this area also tend to be lower than you find elsewhere in the Bay Area. And I think the two items are in fact related. We don't have as sophisticated and a large enough, or as large a menu of recycling services as you'd find elsewhere, and as a result, costs are lower, there is a relationship. So that's one question that we posed to you tonight. As you'll note in the staff report, the cost to add this service early next year would be roughly $2.66 per household, which would result in a rate increase of about 12 percent next year. And this would be something that we would consider in your January review of the rates, if you decide to move forward. The other item that we covered tonight, and we're doing this for a timing reason, is we're just now beginning our work with the SBWMA staff on next year's rates, the rates you'll see in January. And there are several things that have come to our attention that we would suggest that you consider in putting in the rates. One, the first of which, which you'll see at your next council meeting on August 25, is a discussion of enhancing the city's construction and demolition program, the so-called C and D ordinance. We've had this in effect for a number of years, San Carlos was one of the first cities to have a C and D ordinance. I think it's the reason we have the third highest commercial recycling rate in the JPA, and the highest rate for those cities without full-time staff in the recycling arena. However, other cities are doing much better than we are now, and when we look at why that is, these are cities that have a more aggressive C and D program than we do, and also, cities that have counter experts twice a week assigned to this area. If we were to implement such a program, the cost would be roughly $40,000 to $50,000 on a one-time basis for a study and an upgrade of our ordinance, and then a cost of somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000 a year for the counterhelp. As you note in the staff report, we believe that if you look at our current rates, this year, we have $125,000 surplus, which roughly equates to the increased cost of street sweeping, which Councilmember Maude talked about just a few minutes ago, and adding the two C and D components, the initial study and the counterwork. So we believe that those things could be covered with our existing rate structure. The other area that we, or the two areas that we want to talk to you about tonight, and again, get some reaction to, one is a discussion of what we call commercial progressive rates. This would affect businesses, but not residents. And the way our rates are structured today, every time there is an increase in bracket by volume, we bump the rates by 2 percent. And that was effective years ago in increasing the amount of commercial recycling and reducing the amount of commercial garbage collection. In recent years, cities that are just adding this program, that are new to it, such as Foster City and Redwood City, are now adding 3 percent brackets, or 1 percent more than we have. And so one of the things that we want to get a reaction from the council is whether you would entertain that to be part of the rate structure in January. And then the final item has to do with the city's franchise fee for garbage and recycling hauling. When we did a study recently, as part of the previous agenda item, and asked other cities how they were dealing with the problems of increased costs and updates, we were surprised to find that other cities have increased their garbage franchise fee while we have not. San Carlos's garbage franchise fee has been at 5 percent for many years, but as we look around us, neighboring cities have increased to that rate, to 10 percent, and in one instance, in Belmont, it has actually gone up to 13 percent. This would have a significant increase to the city's general fund revenues if the council were to entertain it, because it could raise somewhere between $240,000 and $384,000 per year, but again, that would have to be covered in the rates. So even though our original agenda item tonight was primarily around the discussion of organics and food scraps, I felt it was important to also bring these other rate-related items to you, so you have the whole picture in front of you as you decide what items you're interested in, not interested, as we begin this work of presenting rates to you in January. And I should also mention, and I'm sure you probably recall it from last time, that any rate adjustment will be subject to a full Prop 218 hearing and all of that. It'll be the same process as before. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, council, we'll have some questions of staff now, and then we'll have public comment before greater discussions. Any questions? Councilmember Maude?
Just one quick question, you mentioned that 10 cities didn't, chose not to participate in this.
Correct.
Would you, do you have any indication that they didn't do it because they're not interested at all in this process, or they said, "Let's just wait till 2011"?
It's primarily the latter. I think everybody on the board is interested in this process. I think we're in a somewhat unique position this year, because we didn't need to raise the rates where those other 10 did.
Okay.
And I think their concern was, if, you know, to pick on one city, let's say Menlo Park, had rate increase of, I think, like 12 to 15 percent.
Okay.
To add, this would have been another 12 percent on top of that, and they just didn't feel that was.
So it was timing, you felt it was 10 to 2, basically, of timing on those other 10 cities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions. One is one of participation. If other cities chose to join next year, midway through this program, should we approve it? Would that affect our rates?
It would not, and also, to that point, Mayor Lewis, in checking with SBWMA, and also with Allied, I'm told that we do have the option of implementing this, even if Burlingame does not. That is, the costs are proportional, so it can be done on a one-city basis, and that was a point we wanted to clarify.
Right, but additional cities won't mean less expenses?
Additional cities could come online if they wished, and I think the scenario under which that might happen is if someone landed in the situation we're in now, that is, next year, they had a zero-rate year, they could, I guess.
But, again, but just to be clear, that would not change the amount that we would be charged by?
Correct, our share will be the same, yes.
And then, I know staff is suggesting, and I'm looking forward to council discussion on this, the 12 percent increase to residential-only was, can you talk a little bit about that decision? And so I have a question within that to pose for you.
Sure.
One is, can commercial accounts participate in this program if they want to, or is it residential-only? And did we talk to the Chamber of Commerce, or the commercial folks, to see of their interest? And three is, my guess is we have some commercial companies that maybe have a greater proportion of wet methane, so if you could adjust that?
I will. In fact, your questions are very similar to ones that Councilmember Royce called me the other day about. We do have a commercial organics program already. It is primarily aimed at restaurants, and in fact, I'm proud to say that Vic's Restaurant, one of our restaurants in town, recently won an award from the SBWMA as one of the best commercial organics recyclers in the entire JPA. So we do have participation, we do work with Allied, and with SBWMA to encourage more businesses to come into that program. As you might guess, given the number of restaurants that continue to come into Laurel Street in San Carlos regularly, we have a stream of potential clients. So we do go after that, and that program is separately costed, and is part of the, it's an add-on to those restaurant rates. As far as the comment in the staff report about how this would be charged, we did note that if you charged both commercial and residential ratepayers, the impact on the rate for residences would be less, but of course, this is a residential-only program, so it would be, it's not usual for us to charge residential costs to the commercial sector, but technically, I suppose you could propose it.
Right, I mean, I think there's always a philosophical discussion about being a part of the community, and whether or not the whole community should bear costs, that, as opposed to just...
Right. And just along those lines, but conversely, the reason, for example, that the C and D program is shown to spread across everyone is because, obviously, there's construction and demolition, both in single-family and commercial. So we normally allocate costs based on where the program is centered, but it's not mandatory.
Just for very quick education, could you just do a brief description on what is meant by wet waste? Because sometimes in the report, we refer to just plant, and then sometimes, very quickly in the report, the wet waste goes by the wayside, if you will, and it's just talked about as plants and organics.
It's technically referred to by SBWMA and Allied as organics, and what is meant by that are things that are, some people refer to as food scraps. That could be things like meat bones, meat, fish, fish bones, it could be pizza containers, soiled food containers, that sort of thing. The idea is that, as part of this program, and you saw it in the staff report, people would be given a food pail, if you will, and they would put this material into it, and they would then subsequently put it into the green waste container. The reason that it's put in that particular container is both the green waste and the food waste are ultimately composted together.
And if they're intermingled in this plan with this service, is that okay?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. I noticed in the Allied proposal, there's no education for the public.
Yes.
And yet, it seems to be probably the key participation issue, I think, for everybody is, what is it, how's it available, how do I take advantage of it?
Right, you're exactly right, and you'll notice that in the modification proposed by both staff and SBWMA, we added an educational component. We feel pretty strongly about that. You, council, will recall that San Carlos was the pilot for the recent battery and cellphone program, and we preceded that with a couple months of outreach. We would propose to do so today. That also explains, by the way, the reason that even though Allied is saying they could have this program up in 90 days, we would suggest a somewhat longer time, so we could add in an educational component, as the mayor suggests.
Right. Okay, why don't we take public comment, and we'll have some more discussion, perhaps some more questions for staff. Michelle McKenzie? Who will be followed by Andrea Westland.
Hi, I'm Michelle McKenzie, I'm resident of San Carlos, and I'm speaking tonight in favor of the organics, food scrap, whatever, proposal. And I'm sure you guys are aware, if you pass this proposal, or approve this proposal, it would greatly diminish the amount of waste sent to landfills, especially the stuff, the wet waste, that emits a lot of methane. Right now, about 20 percent of what is sent to landfill is comprised of just food scraps. So that's a lot. And I think you guys should also know, this is a very popular proposal amongst San Carlos residents. Everyone I've spoken to about it really strongly supports it. In fact, most people consider it a no-brainer, because it's the kind of thing, it's good for everybody. It's good for the environment, obviously, it's less waste, you turn something that would otherwise be trash into a resource, which is compost, that we can all use to enrich our soil. It's good for the individual. So many of us these days are trying to live lighter and more sustainably, and this is some way we can do it without significantly more effort on our parts. And it's good for San Carlos. We're talking about trying to be a green leader on the peninsula, I think this only cements it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrea Westland, who will be followed by Pat Potter.
Hi, my name's Andrea Westland, resident of San Carlos, with my family for the last seven years, also speaking in favor of the food scraps recycling. The folks I speak to actually think it's already passed. They thought, "Oh, wow, great, well, when's that going to happen?" I'm like, "They're still voting on it. Come out, come out, talk." So again, as much as Michelle said as well, that everyone's really positive about this. I think everyone would be happy to pay that amount of money. And most people feel like they're going to be able to reduce the number of trash cans or the size of the trash can, and that for them, it wouldn't actually be an additional cost at all. And something that would just, again, as I said a couple months ago, or maybe a couple weeks ago, just something that would make us happy about living in San Carlos.
Thank you very much. Pat Potter, who will be followed by Pat Bell.
Hi, Pat Potter, San Carlos resident, San Carlos Green. I think it was wonderful that we got the greenhouse gas emission report in the same time as we got the food recycling, organics recycling program. Because in the report, it tells you exactly how many metric tons of gas that San Carlos is responsible for because of Ox Mountain. And so if you accept this food waste program, you will reduce that carbon footprint. This, I hate having copied all these, because it is trees. But these are the petitions that have been signed for the food scraps program. I'd like you all to take a look at it with the comments. And I'd also like to say, as far as the greenhouse gas emission, San Carlos is starting a Bike Buddies program, so we're working on bicycling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat Bell.
Hello again. You each got an email from me showing how people, if they participate in this, could actually lower their cost each month. And it's my understanding that the restaurants have to pay for this food scrap recycling, but they sign on because it means that they don't have as much garbage, and it evens out. So they recycle for nothing. So I think that it's a good reason for people to participate. You could include that in your education. And I don't think it's going to be, it won't be an increase in cost for anybody who really participates in this program. So I think that increased cost, which is very scary, every time you have to raise the cost of anything, I don't think it's real. I mean, if people insist on throwing their food in their garbage can, then they're going to pay $2.66 more a month. They put it in the right bucket, they'll save money. And I didn't know you were going to talk about C and D, but I've been concerned about that, too. I'm specifically concerned about Bob Stafford tearing down that beautiful old house for his Chestnut Cherry project. I drove by the other day, and I thought, "I wonder what's going to happen to those beautiful old windows." There are companies now that will come in and deconstruct that house, board by board, so that you get, they take out the whole window with the casing and sell it to somebody. And it's a nonprofit group, the local one is a nonprofit in East Palo Alto. There's a bigger, there are much bigger ones in Berkeley and Oakland. But I'd like to see brochures about that given to people who are going to tear something down. Get whole house in there to take the, I've watched them, I mean, I haven't spent a lot of time, but I've been there when they're deconstructing, and they're coming out with two-by-fours and siding and whatever. And they have a sale the weekend before and say, "We have pavers, we have bricks, we have this, we have that." People come dig the pavers out of the ground and take them away for a modest price, because they're used. I mean, and we've been at Pacific Grove twice this summer. They recycle 62%. And a lot of the people who are in Pacific Grove are tourists, staying in hotels. They still do just 62%. They have the recycling bins right there. And I didn't even notice that they had increased their sales tax until Mark talked about it when he was talking about the cities that have recently raised the sales tax. Didn't notice.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bell. Council discussion. Councilmember Royce?
Well, maybe it's good to go first, because I'm on the fence here. There's a lot of reasons, well, definitely, we need to get into recycling our food scrap. It's a percentage of what we throw away. We need to increase our diversion rate. I'm just a little torn, and I'd like to, I'll throw out a few points so that you guys could kind of address this. Does it make sense to do it now, or does it make sense to wait a couple years? The money, the cost, to me, though, is a significant one. I mean, we're talking about $2 per plus, per household, but it is about $230,000 per year, if you break out that amount between two cities over a two-year period of time. And so that gets my attention. Even though I'm not paying for it, and the city's not paying for it, or I'm paying $2 for it, $230,000 is a lot of money. I'm mostly interested, though, is, let's do it, but I want to make sure we do it right. I've done a lot of research on the web in the last few days. Called Brian, asked a lot of questions. I called Allied, I called the representative that's currently doing the food waste program. And I think the people that I've talked to really need to be educated. I thought food scraps was mainly greenery. I didn't, my wife didn't think it included, you know, food. I didn't know it included pizza boxes. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that we do need to really educate the public out there on how important this is and what a volume of waste it is. But I'm not sure, Allied, since they're not participating in an educational program, I made a phone call on Friday morning to them. They haven't returned my call, and this is the coordinator for the program. When we do have a new contract, and we have a whole new process, and we have new bins a couple years from now, maybe that's the best time to promote this. On the other hand, you know, to reduce emissions and to be more green, there's nothing wrong with starting a little sooner. Maybe a couple dollars per household isn't a lot. And then one other item I thought about is that, and I don't know if you out there are like me, but when I think of garbage and recycle items, I can't wait for the garbage truck to come by every week. Now, you put the garbage out there, and a piece of fish goes in there and some other things. And boy, about, within about a week, I'm ready for this garbage can to get picked up. And my green bins, I actually have two of them. They kind of hang around the garden. Sometimes, of course, in the fall, they fill up quickly. And other times of the year, they kind of sit there. To me, they're part of my composting, which I do. They're part of my excess greenery that I do put out onto the street. But I don't have that sense of urgency to put it out on the street. And so one also minor concern I have is, if I have my green bins, and I throw that one piece of fish in there, I have to set it out every week. And I'm not sure how that's going to, you know, increase, you know, the volume and the cost and the efficiencies of these trucks coming and picking up the green bins all the time. So in summary, I'm really, really on the fence. I'd like to, I could be swayed either way. Definitely want to do it, do it now, do it later. I would be happy with both. But I do want us to consider this, because this does cost money. Our residents will be paying for it. And I just want to make sure that when we do it, we do it right. People understand what the program is. If we, this program shows that we are buying 14,000 food pails for houses. And I just hope we have the proper public relations and education to get people out there to use these pails properly and know what the process is to really get that acceleration of the program going. So with that, I'd like to hear what you guys think about.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. Councilman Royce has a very legitimate point in talking about the cost increase. It was probably the biggest point that I had of concern, looking at the program. But I can look at this, and I feel I can be legitimate in saying it's a modest cost increase. There is an increase in service. Candidly, I always forget which week recycling is. And being a pizza guy, the pizza box recycling is a big deal for me. So I tend to live on flat food. If you can slide it under a door, that's what I tend to eat. I work in programming. So it's, I think this is a moderate cost. I would prefer to do this sooner than later. I agree with Councilman Royce about the education. I noticed that there was a 90-day notice here. I would love to see if this could be done for the holidays, just kind of recognizing, you know, what are we going to do with all these fruitcakes? We've got to get rid of them. It's a fact.
You can't sweep me up a straight line like that and expect me to be quiet. Go ahead.
But we're going to have a lot of holiday stuff. It would be great to have this in place for the holidays. But I would support any measure to make certain that the education component of this program is done appropriately and correctly. But I would push to do this sooner and get the program out.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. You know, one man's modest is another man's expensive. You know, and 12.3%, you know, seems like a little bit more than modest, in my mind. Again, nothing, everyone, it's all relative. We are going to be, you know, that's why I asked Mr. Moore about these other 10 cities, where they all, you know, saying, "Well, we don't want to be green." I mean, of course, that's not what they said. What they said was that they think in their cities that they feel in 2011 there's going to be a complete change in the way we collect garbage in this JPA. And we can be ahead of the curve, certainly. And we can have some information go out in the next four to five months on one area. And then in another year or year and a half, we can have another amount of information, or maybe a third amount of information, depending on what other items come before us. But I just, it's difficult for me. Habits are hard to change. I think it's going to be a big change when we get the new agreement with whoever is our new trash collector, whether it's Allied or one of the other bidders. And I just feel that for the amount of cost that is here and for the benefit, like, it's been mentioned that if you put less in your can, you can get a smaller can. Well, I have the smallest can right now. There's only two in our household, and we have a 32-gallon can. That 32-gallon can's going to still be there. I have to pay for that $32 can, if I put nothing in it, okay? If I had a 64-gallon can, and I produced a lot of foodstuffs or food waste, perhaps I may have a different thing. Last week, or should I say this past Monday, I guess it was not yesterday, the week before, I had to put out four weeks' worth of recycling, because I was on vacation for the previous one. We have a ton of recycling in our house. We have an amazing amount of paper, an amazing amount of bottles and cans that go out there. If I had to pay for a can for that, I'd have it three times. I'd have a 96-gallon can. So to me, it works perfectly in my household. Again, I'm not trying to say my household is just like everyone else's, believe me. But it's hard for me on some of this, some of these costs. And I'm hopeful that when these things come into effect, it won't be a 12.3% increase. It'll be far less than that. Because again, it'll be spread over 12 cities, plus, or 12 groups, 11 cities in the county, plus, it'll be amortized, as Mr. Moore said, over 10 years or more, as opposed to over two years. So this program will be here, but I would be shocked if it cost anything close to $2.66 a month. A couple other comments you wanted, I think, some comments on these other items, I believe.
Can I suggest we take that separately?
Certainly. No problem at all. I wasn't sure how you wanted to do it, Mr. Mayor. That's fine.
No, I appreciate that. I just, I feel like if we.
That's fine. Fine. I think those are basically my comments. And I have to honestly say that I don't think I can support this. I support the concept, but I think I'd like to do it in 2011 with everything else that we're going to be doing. And it makes it easier for everyone to understand, gives us more time for the educational process, as well as more ways to change our habits that are always seemingly hard to do.
In the next, in 2011, when we start the next program, if we go to single stream, is there still separation required for food scraps?
I'd have to check on that. I'm not sure which items go into the single stream or not. I'm guessing there is, but I'm not sure on that 100%.
Okay. You know, in, everybody's sort of, sorry?
I know it's not a legal question, but with single stream, it's your bottles and paper, generally, that go together. It's not your yard waste. So yard waste would still be in a separate bin.
And food waste.
And food waste would be in that separate bin with the yard waste.
I was going to, sort of the pizza box, half of that. But I think, I think you're right.
I believe that's the way it is.
So, yeah, in that, in that case, if you're on the fence, in my opinion, that's one of the things that kicks it back over into doing it sooner rather than later. I completely agree. I think there's a paradigm shift everybody needs to make with garbage and recycling. I think it's a shift many other communities have made, actually, earlier than this. I think this is a way, when we talked about the JPA before, and that we couldn't affect any change into 2011, when we had the first discussion, I think, the year before last, to me, that it's been a painstaking wait, as it is. There's so many communities that already have single stream, and they have food waste. And rather than it being ahead of the curve, with all due respect, we're behind the curve. I think by a significant margin in the community. I've been somewhat alarmed in really how far behind we are over the years. I think we need to really work hard at our recycling and education. I would guess if we start a significant education plan now that will hope to have people participating over the course of the next 12 months, but that way, when we start that next contract, we should be well ahead of the game, rather than starting an education campaign, really, in 2011. And it could be another 12 months before people really start to catch on to it. I would like to see, not only us consider doing this tonight. I realize that there's an economic component to it. And I will admit, I prefer to look at it as $2.33 a month, as opposed to 12%. 12% sounds scary to me. $2.33 a month doesn't sound scary to me, especially when this should be a fundamental way that we start to affect change in our community. And whether we like it or not, whether or not we grew up with this idea or not, we all have to start thinking differently. And I think we're all aware of that, and there are some certain painful steps along the way. Well, we should have done this two years ago, in my mind. We're late now, and we're not ahead of the curve. So I'd really encourage council to consider passing this tonight. And I would also like to see us, perhaps this fall, consider recycling education effort. Actually, agendize that and talk about maybe a partnership with the schools. We can take this up at our next 2+2, perhaps. I mentioned this once before in the council meeting. I got a lot of favorable emails on the idea where we really, a full-court effort, and actually, youth helping educate adults on what recycling means. And I'd like to see us personally include this program in it.
Through the chair. Through the chair, I'd just like to, you know, clarify what I said when I said "ahead of the curve." I meant relative to the 12 cities, not "ahead of the curve" in all of the.
I understand. That's why I said, "With all due respect." I didn't mean.
I want to make sure, I make sure that.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to throw a high-tight one there. I just, I just felt like, because of the JPA, we're behind the curve.
I understand. Because of, yeah, all of us are.
To me, I felt handcuffed by it for years. So this is something I think we can do, and it's a positive direction for the city. Any other comments, or we can entertain a motion?
Again, through the chair. I'm sorry, go ahead.
If it's okay, what I'd like to do is to talk, to create a separate discussion point. The specific action motion point tonight, I believe, is just on this recycling program. And then with council's and staff's approval, can we have the discussion on the fees aspect of it, right after a motion for the?
Right. Yeah, I think what we're looking for on the organics is some direction. And if there's a majority to move ahead, what we will do is work with Allied and SBWMA on an agreement to bring back to the council, and also an educational campaign. I think SBWMA staff and myself thought that was important. I hear the council loud and clear, that's an important item to use, so we will include that.
City attorneys, is it okay if we continue discussion on fees after a motion for this, for the solid waste recyclables?
We can have separate motions on each of the component parts of this report.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I move for an immediate implementation of the solid waste, oh, weekly residential food scraps and plant material collection services. food scraps and plant material collection services. Any second? Forthcoming? If there's none from the other council, I'll second. Christine?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Chris Sillie? Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And with that, we should talk a little bit about, I believe that Mr. Moore presented a couple of discussion subjects for tonight. One is commercial progressive rates, where San Carlos is at 2% and other communities are at 3%.
Correct. And what the action item there would be, is I'd like to get some conceptual direction from the council. If it's of interest, what we would do is hire a firm to do a rate study, which would probably cost us something on the order of $5,000, and we would then bring a full report back to you. The idea here, by the way, is very similar to what one of the speakers earlier mentioned about if you make it easier to save money through recycling versus collection, people will do that. That's exactly what we're trying to do here with this program.
A question for you. It was my impression, and again, just this is for my own edification, that we were doing a complete fee study that was going to be presented to council later this year, beginning of next?
True, but this is different. What happens is the current solid waste contract is what's called a rate-based cost-plus agreement. So each year, to set the rates, we have to hire a firm to crunch a lot of numbers. That process starts in September, and that's frankly the reason I'm asking all these great questions. I want to get a sense of which items you're interested in, and then we'll fold that into the rates. The rates will come to you in January roughly, and it'll be along with a 218 hearing, and so I'm trying to figure out what elements to put into that mix.
But we, and is this something we can address tonight?
Just direction.
Just direction.
Yes. If the council is, this is very similar to the question I asked you in February. If you're interested in a bit more information on it, what I would then do is retain the consultant to crunch the numbers and come back to you probably in October, November with a more detailed report.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. I have difficulty understanding, and perhaps, I tried to listen, I really did, and I read this, but I don't understand this 2%, 3%. You just, can you do it in 25 words or less? In English?
I will try. The way the rates work is rather than the rates linearly increasing for the more garbage you have, the more you pay. This is very similar to, let's say, your electrical bill, you know, where PG&E surcharges you, so every time you're in another bracket, you actually have an even higher amount you pay, and there's a disincentive for you to jump to those brackets. Your incentive is to turn down your thermostat and all that. This is the same principle as applied to garbage and recycling. And the index factor at the moment that we have, because we have an older program, is every bracket is indexed by 2%. What we're seeing in the cities that are adopting this program more recently is they're now being a little more aggressive than we've been, and they're indexing at 3% every bracket. The reason that I bring it to your attention is, as the council well knows, we're now at 47% reported diversion. We're not at the 50% state requirement. Our account, if you will, is coming up for review in December at the state level. We're trying each year to show continued good faith and progress to get 50%. In talking to the SBWMA staff, and the reason you see some of this data in this report is what they've said to me and to the staff is, the food scraps program is a wonderful program. It will raise your number by about a percent to percent and a half. If you really want to get over 50% in a hurry, if you do progressive rates and you do a CNT, you'll be there next year.
So this is just relating to commercial, this is just relating to commercial rates?
Correct. It does not affect residential.
Residential rates, okay, first thing. And the second thing is, because it encourages people to recycle more?
Correct.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to get in English so I can understand where I'm going here. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I understand the 3%, and I understand the frustration of the low commercial recycling. One thing that I brought up to Allied, and I think I probably brought it up to Brian also, but I put it on the record that has frustrated me, is that a number of businesses generate paper, and shredding, and confidential shredding, and confidential destruction of documents is a major portion of their waste. At this point in time, Allied and SBWMA does not do confidential destruction of materials. This is significant tonnage that is being recycled and is not being counted. I have to pay for a private company to put secure bins in my facilities, they come out, do onsite destruction, it's not counted here. So until that service is available, I mean, you can raise the rates all you want to, I cannot legally put a lot of my documents into this issue. So it's something I brought up to Allied, I'm going to put it out here for the record that I want to see confidential destruction available for recycling. And if that's available, then I think we'll start to be able to see some rates going up, but I would probably be inclined to support a more aggressive rate. I'd like to see the numbers, and I would like to hear from the Chamber of Commerce and others how they feel a rate would affect them.
Any comments? Mr. Mayor, Chris Sillie? Any comments? So council, would you like staff to come back with that? Staff is looking for direction on that. Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. We don't need a motion for that?
Yes, just direction.
And then the other issue was the 5% garbage franchise fee? I'm having trouble speaking this evening.
Right. And there, the question is whether we should move to the prevailing practice of being at 10 or 13% versus 5%. The significance there is because the rates change on a calendar year basis, if you want to consider that, we need to crunch the numbers now, otherwise we have to wait another year.
In the JPA or the state, is there a cap or limitation on a city for the franchise fee that they can impose?
I don't believe there is, no. No.
Okay. Please.
Quick question again. So right now, we have 5%. Allied pays us $239,000 a year?
Correct.
Okay, let's say we make it 10, so they're going to pay us $478,000 a year?
Correct.
Right off their bottom line?
Comes out of the rates.
Wait, 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 come on, speak English, please. Right off their bottom line, or does it get passed along in the rates?
It's passed along the rates.
Okay, so if you raise it, we're paying for it. People are paying for it. The city gets the money, but the people are paying for it.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to understand that everybody gets the program here.
Got that.
I mean, I just want to make sure it's not free money. Allied's not going to give it to us out of their bottom line. It's passed on.
A point of clarification, that by increasing this rate, that would be, the fee would be borne by all members of the JPA and not just San Carlos?
No.
No, just San Carlos. This is just our, our rate is 5%.
It's an arbitrary franchise fee each city assigns to Allied, which they reassign to their citizens.
Got, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, the policy question here really is several of the other cities have apparently some years ago made this adjustment as part of their updating their ordinances and balancing their general fund. We have not. So the question is, is that something we're interested in?
But if $239,000 more, what are we estimating here? We've got, how many customers? 18,000, 10,000? I don't know.
10,000?
14,000, I'm guessing.
Okay, so 14,000, you're going to make me do the math, aren't you? You know, I mean, 14, 239.
I think we're 17 bucks.
1499, 15, what is it? 15 cents, $1.50, $15, what is it?
Yeah, right around that. Sorry, city attorney, did you have something?
I was going to suggest that it's probably comparable to the organics cost across everyone. The organics cost for everyone was in the neighborhood of, I think Councilmember Royce said, $240,000, and it was a 3% rate for everyone. This is comparable.
Okay, again, I'm just trying to understand, so.
About a 3% rate increase.
So the facts, the facts are all out there, so if it's about $2 and change, again, add it on per month or per quarter?
No, because this would be for everyone, not residential.
Okay, so it'd be broader, much broader.
Be less than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how many of the cities in the JPA have already done this?
I haven't surveyed all 12, but from my recollection, there are at least five that are at 10% or above. It's almost half.
I guess I'd sort of like to see those numbers, just to see where we are in cost comparisons before.
We can certainly bring that back next time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Prefer that. Thank you. Okay, unless there's any other discussion, staff? Okay. We'll go on to item number 9C, which is consideration of introducing an ordinance establishing a traffic impact mitigation fee. I'm trying to speak too fast. I think that's what the deal is. That's what my speech coach.
Some mayor members of the council, as you were, City of San Carlos relies on the access to 101 through Holly Street for interchange and Britton Avenue partial interchange. And it is very important for the future of the city that these two streets approaching the Highway 101 have adequate capacity for future development in the city. In the traffic study for Palo Alto Medical Foundation, the study showed and indicated that for the future, if all of East San Carlos specific plan is constructed and everything else is on the planning application approved and possibly approved, if all of those projects are approved in the future, you're talking about year 2020 or 2025, Holly Street at the intersection of Industrial Road and Britton Avenue at the intersection of Industrial Road will operate at unacceptable level of service. However, to solve that problem and mitigate the impact of all that traffic, these two intersections, two mitigation measures were identified in the report. For Holly Street, actually, Holly Street has two measures that both have to be implemented to make the intersection operate at acceptable level of service. One is widen Holly Street by 10 feet, where approximately length of about 200 feet, to have three lanes approaching Industrial Road on eastbound. And then Holly Street 101 interchange has to be modified to increase capacity for northbound ramp. Britton Avenue approaching Industrial Road eastbound has to be widened for a length of about 400 feet to provide a dedicated left-hand lane. The combination of these improvements will make these intersection operate at acceptable level of service. And because of these traffic and everything that is going to happen to these intersections are directly related to future development, not the existing residential units, not existing commercial or industrial, is all of it is directly related to future development. Therefore, there has to be a vehicle to have the future developers pay for these improvements so they can come and city council or planning commission, city council can approve those projects based on having capacity at Holly Street and Britton Avenue. In order to do that, the traffic impact fee plan that is Exhibit A attached to the ordinance was prepared by Hexagon Transportation Consultants, and Gary Black of Hexagon is present in case you have any questions. Basically, I'm going to try to, rather than give you the exact numbers, try to give you some round numbers. For example, in the study, it shows the impact, the negative impact, it occurs during the PM peak from 4:00 to 6:00 PM through these intersections. And for, if all the possible development on the east side, everything else is constructed, approximately 400 vehicles during the peak hour will go through these intersections. Now, if the total cost of these improvements, for example, is $4 million, and then we divide the $4 million by 4,000 vehicles, so it's 1,000 per vehicle. So if any project that adds one vehicle during PM peak hour to this intersection pays $1,000. And again, you can do the math for anything above that, they pay that. So traffic impact fee has all the data, it's calculated, and there's Table 9 that shows every land use, how much traffic they generate that goes through this intersection during PM. And when we take those trip generation and multiply it by how much is it going to cost per vehicle, which right now we're estimating approximately 1,150, it could go to 1,200 once we complete the cost estimates. So this ordinance, what it does, considering and assuming the city council would introduce the ordinance, the ordinance will be, again, in front of city council adoption at August 25th. At the same time, a resolution will be presented to city council to establish the fees. The reason we recommend that fees be established by resolution, because these fees are now based on estimates, basically on staff's estimate. And every year, of course, there is inflation, where oil prices go up, and actually, when we go through construction of these projects, those fees may change. Eventually, what the city will collect is actual cost of construction of these projects. And the advantage that we have is, as you know, city council has approved, the city will use redevelopment agency bond proceeds to proceed and construct these projects, and then as the applications come in and city collects the money, redevelopment agency will be reimbursed, up to total 100% of what redevelopment agency will spend. Again, these fees are directly related to the traffic that all future development are going to add during the PM peak to the San Carlos. So basically, there is a nexus between the fee and what the development is going to do. And of course, we have reviewed this, and Mr. Landzone and I have worked on this for the last couple of months to make sure everything is okay, everything is legal, and it can be done. And of course, he prepared the ordinance, and again, traffic impact fee, I have reviewed it three, four times with Hexagon and staff, and approved it. And based on that, we recommend the city council to introduce the ordinance this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor, one of the concerns I had, and I'll direct this in the form of a question, is that according to Appendix A, which is what we describe in the proposed ordinance, we were talking about the Holly, basically the entire Holly Street industrial intersection. One of the questions that came up was, what about Holly Old County and Holly El Camino? One of the things that I find concerning in this is that we've specified a very specific design for the Holly industrial and for the Britton interchanges. We know that we need a lot of design along Holly, and it seems that we're limiting ourselves. Can we expand this language to allow for greater flexibility of projects we may want to do along Holly?
Traffic analysis indicated that those intersection will be operating at acceptable level of service with implementing 20% TDM, which is in the general plan circulation element, that all future development, city has to cooperate with all developers to come up with the 20% TDM. So if there is going to be 20% TDM, intersection of Holly and Old County Road and Holly and El Camino will operate at acceptable level of service. There is no physical improvement has been identified to mitigate. There is no negative impact to mitigate.
So I'll rephrase my question and address it to Mr. McThaddy and also to our attorney. I understand, so I'll rephrase what I heard, was if TDM happens, big if, then the intersection mostly works. My question was more specific, that the Appendix A has very specific projects. My question was, as city council, can I be a little more general and say other issues that come along Holly Street as we may see from time to time? How does this work with this fee mitigation?
Again, the fee, there has to be a nexus. It being if they're going to collect a fee, the fee we collect has to be specified for a specific project. If, for example, in the future, you do another traffic analysis, and traffic analysis shows that if you're going to, for example, redevelop all of downtown San Carlos, and those intersection will operate at an acceptable level, there will be a nexus to collect more fees. But at this point, there is no nexus.
To your point, this was based on a traffic study that was done the year before last, which analyzes it. City attorney Landzone, would you like to?
I was just going to add, and the improvements that are in this plan have been added.
I was just going to add, and the improvements that are in this plan have been added to the circulation element of the general plan. The improvements that you mentioned that might come up in the future have not yet been added to the circulation element of the general plan for improvements. There haven't been studies done yet that show that they're that adversely impacted that the improvements are needed. If they are needed, then we're just going to get another transportation improvement plan, we're going to amend this plan, and then they will be included in the ordinance at that time.
So which would include a new study?
Great. So I understand that to put a fee plan into place, I have to specify a project, and it is also within the council purview to come back from time to time after we've done a study to say, this is another area, and we can add to this fee.
Yes.
So that's how we would expand it. The other point, and I'll just direct this to you, Mr. Mayor, is that we do talk about a specific design around the Holly industrial interchange. I think there was some discussion at a previous meeting that we were still going to discuss that plan and that design. So I'm curious, in terms of when do we want to discuss what? Is this the right time to discuss the fee? Should we talk about the design first? I guess I'm just.
Yeah, my guess is the fee is separate from the design in that it's a way to collect fee for whatever design we end up with. So they two run somewhat independently, but please.
The important part of it is the cost estimate, because this fee, it depends on the cost estimate. And what we're going to do at the interchange is not exactly what we want to do. Interchange is the state and federal highway administration involved. Over two years of meeting with Caltrans, the staff, engineers, and sort of negotiating, there were three or four different alternatives. One of them was estimated cost was $23 million. So we changed and we convinced Caltrans engineers that this plan that we submitted is going to work, and we had CCAG approve the CCAG staff, and this has been approved. And based on that, we're calculating the cost estimate, which instead of 23 million, we brought it down to about 3.7 million. So that's the important part, but at any time, we will be presenting that design, conceptual design, to the City Council shortly, if you like.
Great. And Mr. Mayor, I just would also like to add that I've spent several hours with Mr. McThoddy over the last several weeks, learning more about traffic patterns and where things are, and I am still learning a lot, and I thank him for his patience.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. McThoddy?
No, I just, one quick question, or not question, but these are, make sure that everyone understands, let's assume Palos Medical Foundation, 731 times 1,150, approximately $840,000. That's all money going to the capital section, capital improvements, not going to the general fund.
It goes for these projects only.
I understand, but again, I just, I want to make sure that everyone understands where this $800,000 shows up. The other thing, it looks like that if you're the last guy building, you're going to pay more. Because costs are going to go up for projects. I mean, that's just life. I mean, that's the way it is. They're going to, 1,150 is going to probably go up through inflation, especially if the projects are added or whatever. So the last guy, the last guy developing is going to pay a lot more than 1,150.
Yes and no.
Okay.
If it's $1,150, $1,150 per trip today, this year.
Right.
Anybody coming in this year between now and next year about this time, pay that.
Exactly.
Next year, by resolution, you're going to adjust the fee.
Sure.
Either higher or even when we construct, maybe the price will go, because we are trying to be very conservative at cost estimate.
Understand.
And we're including all of city overhead cost in there.
Okay.
So three years from now, if the cost has gone up by 20%, again, City Council will adopt a resolution and raise the fee. But if someone pays today, after you adopt the ordinance resolution next month, and someone comes in that pays the fee, they pay the fee, the following year, the fee goes up, we're not going to go back.
No, I know you're not going to go back to them, but my point is, depending on where you are on the planning process, and depending on what your project is, and depending on how fast we build the infrastructure, it could, may not, but it's possible that the last person could pay, if the world spins the way it still does, more, and again, I'm just saying that for the record, this number is going to go up. So if I was, I guess I'm speaking to the fact that folks want to get going quicker rather than later, if they want to, if they want to get stuff going, that's all I have.
Having a sale on traffic impact fees.
Having a sale on traffic impact fees, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions for staff?
Nope.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. McThoddy. Council, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce, I guess, ordinance number?
1400.
1400. Ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending the municipal traffic code, adding Chapter 8.50, traffic impact fee.
I'll second that. Without further discussion, Christine?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number nine D. Consideration of Introducing an Ordinance Amending Chapter 8.07 of the San Carlos Municipal Code Tobacco Retailer Permits.
Mr. Mayor, I'd virtually submitted on the staff report, but add that this is a program that's been in effect since 1998. The city has worked with the county. The purpose of the retailer tobacco permit is, as indicated in the letter from Supervisors Hill and Gordon, to do what we can to prevent the sale of tobacco sales to minors. Apparently, this is still a problem, and the county feels that with the changes that they've suggested, including going from five years to one year for a permit, that they'll have better regulation on this particular issue. We've just made the changes that have been requested by the county. I would imagine if we don't want to make the changes and we stay with our own ordinance, then the county's not going to enforce it for us. We haven't had to pay the county to enforce it, and I would indicate that, to my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about the retail permit in the last 10 years either.
It also says in this letter, to be eligible for state assistance. We have to.
State assistance, I believe, goes to the county, probably for purposes of enforcing the permit.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number?
Introduction?
Introduction?
Yes.
Yes. For the introduction of ordinance number?
1401.
Ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending Chapter 8.07 of the San Carlos Municipal Code Tobacco Retailer Permits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Christine?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Yes, member Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number nine E, which is consideration of accepting the master plan for parks, open space, buildings, and other recreational facilities.
If I may have one second to get this PowerPoint.
Sure, and I'll just take advantage of that to say that we have currently three speaker slips on this. If anybody would like to speak on this, we do have more speaker slips on the table over there, and you're welcome to fill them out.
Thank you.
Bill, which one?
This one right here?
Which one?
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Al. Mayor Lewis and members of the City Council, I stand here before you tonight. We are excited about the draft master plan that we are recommending that the City Council accept. This has gone through a long process with a lot of community input, including each of you as council members. It has gone through the Parks and Recreation Commission, they've been the main vehicle for going through, developing this plan. We did have an outstanding steering committee, Commissioner Tom Johnstone, along with Guy Wallace, the Parks Superintendent, Donna Giampoli Dillard, the Recreation Superintendent, and myself served as the steering committee, working through the Parks and Recreation Commission and with the consultants. We are excited about this plan because it does create a vision. As we're all aware, there are many competing interests with any city for how to spend the tax dollar, let alone when times are tough like they are now, even when times are good, there are many competing interests. What we did was, we wanted a plan that was reflective of the community interest in what the community wanted. I believe that you had that in front of you tonight. This plan will be a tool for the day-to-day work plans by staff, will also be a tool for securing funding, not only funding for the capital projects, but also for operation and maintenance. And you'll see in the report, they've identified the cost, not only to build a facility, but also to operate it and to maintain it. Unfortunately, too many times, those kinds of things are overlooked. They are clearly identified in this report. This report, this master plan, once accepted in its final form, will be a living document. I was kidding with the staff tonight, saying that a year from now, when I come back over, I want to see this report dog-eared and marked up, and I want it to be a living document. I do want to point out one thing in the document, it was also pointed out in the staff report. On pages 77 to 79, and on page 92, there is discussion about the need to secure additional parkland, which has been identified because we will need more land to do everything the community wants in terms of facilities. On these pages, we noted specific properties that could be potential sites for acquisition. This was an idea that came out of a ad hoc group, two commissioners and two council members, several years ago, looking for possible ideas for additional parkland. This was a wish list developed by this committee. The committee did some good work, but because we have no money at this time, it is a wish list. More importantly, staff is hearing concerns from community members whose homes are identified on page 78. This could cause unintended legal complications if we leave this in the final adopted form. They are not needed to be listed for purposes of the master plan. The master plan can be successful without identifying potential specific properties, particularly if it's going to cause any problems for a homeowner or any unintended legal complications for the city. As mentioned in the staff report, we have drafted language, you have it in front of you. Basically, what the language says is it deletes any reference to specific sites, specific properties. It does acknowledge the work of the task force and does make a strong statement that going forward, both staff and decision makers should look for opportunities to increase parkland acreage without identifying any specific sites. Other than that, one glitch, we are very excited about this document, we think it'll be a tremendous tool for staff, for the Parks and Recreation Committee Commission, for the City Council, and for this community. At this point, I'm going to bring up the consultant team to walk you through the PowerPoint and the master plan itself. Bill Harris of Harris Design was the lead consultant. He was ably assisted by two of the people who are here tonight, Lauren Livingston of the Sports Management Group, who dealt with the facilities, and Robert Goldman, a public finance consultant, who dealt with the dollars and cents and the money that we would need. At this point, I'd like to turn over to Bill Harris and his consultant team to finish the presentation.
Thank you, Barry. Very nice to be here in front of you, members of the council. Tonight, our presentation, we're going to touch quickly on the plan purpose and the process, and then give you a summary of the four components of the plan that comprise the master plan itself. Barry addressed these goals, I think he did a very good job. This is a long-range planning tool. We're calling it Vision 2020, a 12-year time horizon for the plan is a reasonable time period for a long, long-range document. And the process began a year ago. We proceeded through several phases, and these phases also correspond to the components of the plan, providing a good baseline of existing conditions in the inventory phase, assessing what the needs are and the very specific needs of this unique community. Phase three, coming up with a plan to achieve the community's goals, and then phase four, the implementation plan, which gets into the financing and funding and costs. We feel that a strong plan is one that has benefited from quite a bit of public outreach and really arises from the community itself, and Barry's group did an excellent job. We saw a much greater amount of public participation on this project than we typically see on these long-range park and recreation master plans. I think part of that was due to the outreach that Barry and his group conducted as well. So first of all, what do we have to begin with? That's the first question in the planning process. This is a map of the City of San Carlos with north up and the Highway 101, oh, very well, on the right. The map shows the existing facilities that make up your park and recreation system currently, the parks, the community buildings. It shows that there's a fairly good distribution of facilities throughout the city. And another strong feature of San Carlos system is that it is a balanced system with opportunities for active and passive recreation. You have about 62 acres of traditional public parks, an additional 22 acres on our public school open space, which is available for the public to use in a limited fashion at certain times. And then the open space areas, something that's very unique to your community in Belmont, having these wonderful city-owned open space areas. Variety of fields and courts and one gymnasium, indoor gymnasium that's at the youth center. And then also, the city has about an acre of indoor square footage in four different buildings, which we'll discuss in a minute. And I'll turn this over to Lauren to talk about the assessment of needs.
Good evening. So the needs assessment was a critical first piece, and it really began by trying to understand your existing system. We did this inventory of existing facilities. We looked at all of the programs that you currently offer, as well as the programs that are available to residents, either commercially or through other service providers, performed a demographic analysis of the community to try to get an understanding of the population and its characteristics, because those are indicators of different kinds of program interests and use. We looked at the recreation trends that are impacting various program offerings, both indoor and outdoor. There aren't many standards that are published for these facilities, but there are a few, and we certainly looked at those and how you compare. There was a statistically projectable survey that was done to assess the interest and willingness to support new facilities, and you'll see that survey results later in the presentation. And then we did a pretty comprehensive benchmarking study of all of your surrounding communities, as well as an aspirational peer in the City of Roseville, where they have developed some wonderful amenities for their community. And we had the pleasure of being able to conduct interviews with some of the City Council members and then with staff, and then this public outreach component. And I will certainly echo what Bill said, it was a really spirited group of people who came and who were very passionate about their interest and about this community, and it was really wonderful to see. With your community, like so many of these peninsula communities, there isn't much anticipated in growth in the community, although we're seeing the changing demographics. You're both getting older on the one end and having very active, engaged boomer population, and there are young families moving into the community. And so it's a wonderful mix to sustain your community and to offer a variety of opportunities through your recreation department. You're a very well-educated community and a relatively affluent community, and that is predictor of high levels of participation in activities, enrichment programs. It generally means that there's a lot of interest in children's programs. But we have this nexus of boomers who are more engaged in physical fitness, health, and well-being than ever before, but also have an interest in volunteerism. And so part of the process was to look at those trends. And so part of the process was to look at those trends and to see what was needed to have your city be able to respond to these evolutions in your population. The survey that I mentioned is just briefly recapped here. And of those people who indicated that they were very interested or moderately interested in these activities, you see that additional trails came in the highest among the survey respondents. And then with above-average interest, and the interest that's been expressed over quite a number of years is for a pool, and interest was kind of split about whether that was indoor, outdoor, one of each would be nice. And then a performing arts center came in at sixty-six percent. Among those items with an average interest were the athletic fields, a community center, adult gymnasium space, a sports complex, and just a little under fifty percent is a dog park. But these are very impressive numbers. These are high numbers when you get this many people who have an interest in these activities, even if it's an average interest. And then those coming in lower on the survey were the sports complex without lights, skate park, and additional tennis courts. That's not to say that any one of these groups doesn't have its advocates who are passionate about it. One thing that was important in the construction of the survey was to not only measure those things that people had an interest in, but those things that people said they were willing to support. And we wanted to look at how those two things correlated. There are things that have a lot of support, but relatively little interest in people's willingness to support it. But the well-above average, in terms of willingness to support, again reflected the highest priority, which was the additional trails. And then the average was, again, the pool and the performing arts. You can see the breakdown. Below the performing arts, it starts to break at less than fifty percent interest. Again, you can argue that when thirty-eight percent want something, that's still a pretty high number. So just in summary, the swimming pool was very high. This community is underserved in access to aquatics. That's pretty consistent throughout this area. There's a high demand in your surrounding communities as well. Performing arts space, and that wasn't truly defined in terms of whether that is a full-blown theater, community theater, but we know there's a real commitment, certainly to children's theater and to having some places for special events. The community center, the indoor gymnasium space for adults, and heard earlier this evening about the concern about the lack of options for adults in the sport activities. And then additional acreage to develop future building sites and short-term improvements to existing buildings were all out of the survey. So in terms of the demand for parks, athletics fields is very high on the list, additional dog park space, playground upgrades, and additional acreage acquisitions so that you can develop more parks at a later date, and then improvements and upgrades to the existing park system. For open space, it was hiking trails, either the completion of those or extension of them, making the trail connections, and then again, just acquiring land as it becomes available to add to the system. In terms of the new community facilities, again, these were the spaces that came up highest on the list. And in response to how the city might address the immediate need for more access to aquatics, there is access at Carlmont. It's somewhat limited, in part because of the demand for their own activities, and the other is the cost to maintain the facilities and keep them available for public use. So a short-term solution may be to try to negotiate some additional time there, although that will be limited. The longer-term objective is to create new indoor or outdoor aquatic facilities, and there's a real mix between those things that provide warm water, good for instructional programs, and that that provides cooler water for competitive swimming, for fitness swimming, water exercise. With the performing arts center, the suggestion for the master plan is that in community hall space, that would be developed large community gathering space, which has come up as a pretty high priority for the community, that there's certainly the opportunity to do something like you see in the photo here, where it creates some stage space, it can create some backstage space, have rigging for some theatrical lighting, so that it can offer a variety of programs. The commitment to a full community theater or performing arts center would certainly require more land in a downtown area than seems likely that you could get, and it would require a large operating subsidy. And so those were considerations that seemed like they were better placed with a separate effort that would be looking at the viability of either local or regional community theater. The community center space, and as you know, the community space in the Qantas Building is now no longer available to the community, but this would be space that could create indoor space, that large community hall that we talked about with a stage, a kitchen that can support those uses, but also could support cooking classes, a wood floor studio for group exercise, dance, other kinds of recreational programs, a fitness room with weights, and this is not meant to compete with the private sector, but really to provide community, family space for that kind of activity, and then some meeting rooms and classrooms. In terms of the adult gymnasium space, we certainly are aware of the limitations and the policy that's in place for adult use of the gymnasium space at the youth center. And one option is to look at that policy, see if there are ways to mitigate the traffic and parking problems that could be created by that use, and make that space available for adult use. It won't conflict with any of the current offerings that are there. Another action would be to incorporate gymnasium space in a community center at a future date. Then in terms of the existing facilities, we had an assessment done and looked at specific improvements for those facilities in terms of their, how they could be improved for their intended use. So we looked at the adult community center, the Qantas Building, L'Oriola, the San Carlos Museum of History and the youth center, and there were specific recommendations, which are contained in your report, but they certainly included ADA upgrades, seismic upgrades, energy efficiency, and then just making the spaces more suitable for their intended Bill, talk to you about the open space trails.
Thank you. And then moving on into the parks portion of the action plan. Open space is such an incredibly important part of the city, and I think it can be taken for granted. It's, the parks are there, and it's not the kind of park that you have to invest a lot of money in and time and effort in maintaining it. But there are some aspects that do warrant some attention. The goal, obviously, is to increase the trail mileage in Big Canyon and Eaton Park, also to implement the Trails Connections Plan, which has been before you in the past, and that is included as an appendix in the master plan document. And we're also recommending that some sort of planning effort be done to address open space, because managing an open space area is much different than managing a park system. Typically, it's done by regional agencies, such as the state and the county and so forth. But you really should look at the natural resources, the fire issues, that type of thing, in a comprehensive plan. Next, we'll look at the community parks. There are three in San Carlos that we would consider to be community parks, which are your larger facilities that have both active and passive facilities. Start off with Arguello Park, very, very successful implementation of phase one. The master plan simply recommends that the phase-two improvements be implemented. Moving on to Burton Park, this, as everybody recognizes, I believe, is San Carlos Central Park. Most of it's in very good condition, the fields. You're improving the, really revamping the entire playground area upcoming. But we are looking at or recommending that another look be taken at updating the master plan for this park. If you look at the area in the center, all very important facilities, but you have a paved center of a green park. And when you think of a central park, you think of facilities that lend themselves to community gathering and that type of thing. So if any of these facilities could be relocated, then we would want to look at what might logically replace them, but not until such time as they were relocated. Your third large park is Highlands, and recommending turf fields and lighting, and then some other minor improvements, including the playground. Next, we move on to the neighborhood parks, which are your middle-sized parks that are predominantly passive, but also have some active facilities in them. Two parks which need very little in the way of improvement, Vista and L'Oriola. Vista Park is successfully evolving itself as a sustainable park, through a lot of community efforts, and those efforts should just continue. L'Oriola Park has been rebuilt relatively recently, and there are just a few items that could be improved. Crestview Park has, presents an opportunity here with the area on the bottom of the slide, which is the play area and courts. These need to be rebuilt. They're just no longer meeting standards. So this is an opportunity that you can take. When you're required to replace playground equipment and make these types of improvements, it's an opportunity to redesign that whole area and modernize it. We're also recommending the synthetic turf at Crestview. Chilton Park is another great opportunity. It's an undeveloped natural area, and so any improvements there would be pathways, benches, improvements that could help people come to the park, use it, but continue to use that park as a natural area without a lot of structure. The North Crestview property was originally purchased by the city as, for uses of the on-ramp to Highway 280, which has not gone forward. And this is another property that we feel needs a planning process in and of its own. If any changes are to be made in this park, we would want that to be done in the context of a master planning process. There are five, what we call mini-parks, tot lots. Two of them lend themselves really well to a comprehensive renovation. Again, as I talked about, with the requirements to replace these playgrounds really provide an opportunity to comprehensively address the park. Other parks need very, very little in the way of improvement at all. And we have a couple of facilities that don't fit neatly into any category. One is a city hall park, very important park for this community. Currently, it's used in a passive sense and kind of as a pass-through, people walk through on the pathways, but it could be reconfigured and some additional components brought in so that would function a little bit better as a central park in a way, or a place for the community to gather and have events. And then the dog parks. Heather Park is recommended for a fair amount of renovation and keep that in place. And then there is a need for other exercise areas throughout the city. The Vista Park area is one possibility. The Caltrain Track Right-of-Way is another possibility. These would help distribute these type of facilities relative to your population. And Barry did make a note that staff is working with a community group currently on looking at other possibilities as well, other areas. With the athletic fields, I know this is a subject you've devoted a considerable amount of time to over the years, and it is a very important one. The easy, yet very difficult to implement solution would be to build a sports complex. It's a long-term solution. It's a very expensive way to go, and land would be required. So then you say, what can we do with what we have? Continuing the program of joint use with the city and school district is very important. I know it's not always an easy negotiation, but it works in other communities, and it's a very important aspect. Improving drainage on the natural fields and then converting some of the existing fields to synthetic turf to provide more hours of play. These would be Highlands, Crestview, and then at Burton Park, just the infields would be synthetic in this recommendation.
I just wanted to point out that you picked the one softball picture where a guy's actually missing the pitch.
Okay.
And I don't think that's any indication of the quality of softball in San Carlos. I just wanted to, I think we tend to hit the ball more often than miss it, that's all. Just wanted to.
They always told me to keep my eye on the ball, but I...
What in the world is that?
For the courts, our study indicates that you're providing a, really a good level of courts per population, the benchmark study that Lauren referenced. Burton and Arguello Courts really need a complete renovation, and that's proceeding in Burton. Some of the courts need improved lighting, and then it was felt that adding other types of courts would be beneficial. And we're saying, yes, add new tennis courts if additional parkland is secured, but we're not recommending building new tennis courts in existing parks, simply because you would be taking something away, and there really isn't the room available for that. The final piece of the plan here is the implementation portion. It's all well and good to develop a plan, a wish list, but if it's not achievable, you really don't have much. So this plan did look at the costs to implement the proposals, including land purchase, so design, construction, and land purchase. And the land purchase component really is the major, is the major impact. So you'll see on some of the items, such as the new community facilities, which are your buildings, they're relatively expensive items, and part of that is due to the land, part of it is just due to the capital cost. The aquatics complex, about twelve to fourteen million is a reasonable range. And again, you know, these costs, with some of these facilities, it's kind of like saying, how much does a new car cost, right? How much does a new community center cost? Well, how big is it? Is it bigger than a breadbox? So we're giving you some reasonable ranges of facilities that would fit your community and would be of the appropriate size. Replacing existing facilities, well, the question is, if we can't build a brand-new community center, what do we do in the meantime? These costs tell you how much it would cost to literally replace these three existing buildings at the same size, in the same location. And that's not a recommendation, but we did want to provide you with a comprehensive look at all of the options. And then finally, the improvements to the existing facilities, short-term, there are improvements that need to be made to keep them operating and serving the community. The cost for improvement of the existing parks, almost twenty million dollars, really fairly reasonable when you think about a twelve-year lifespan on the plan, twelve, fifteen years, you're looking at, you know, less than two million dollars a year. The larger costs, like you look at Highlands Park, Arguello, the larger costs reflect the synthetic turf fields in part, but a lot of the other parks have relatively modest needs. Then the special-use parks, open space, and trails, again, those add up to about three million dollars. Then the special-use parks, open space and trails, again, those add up to about $3 million in recommendations. We wanted to look at what the impacts would be of new construction. And our charge was not to provide a complete estimate of the operation and maintenance costs of your entire system, but rather to look at the impact, or what would the net change be? And this table shows you that the main impact would be from the community facilities, really not from the parks. But if you're building a new swimming pool, aquatics complex, it's going to cost X dollars to maintain. You can see that with aquatics, the cost recovery could be quite favorable, 60 to 100 percent. And if you got 100 percent, then your cost would be zero. Some of the other community facilities would not be expected to recover as great a percentage of cost. The maintenance impacts from the parks and trails is really rather negligible. And then finally, one of the final pieces is the funding. And Robert Goldman prepared the financing plan as part of the plan. It does acknowledge the challenging times that we're in. And, you know, you bring a plan like this to a city council, and you're talking about millions of dollars of improvements, and, you know, we're in budget cuts, and it's a little bit difficult that way. However, it's a long-range plan. This is the time to be thinking about these things and to be developing the funding for the programs. We've identified about 10 funding sources that are relevant, and then we've applied each of the improvements to those funding sources to give you a picture of what sources can be used to fund what types of improvements. And the top one is something that I know Barry has been working very hard at developing on a national level, and that's been very successful with the Burton Park Playground. That's the Alternative Fund Development Program. Other sources include grants, and then some form of taxing measure, which would be required for the community facilities most likely. The expensive items would most likely require some sort of taxing measure. Other funding sources are appropriate for maintenance, and other sources are specific to serving new development. The plan also prioritized the proposals, and the priorities respond to a series of factors. You know, prioritizing, as you know, is very difficult. It seems like, how can something not be on the A priority, right? But if everything's an A priority, then nothing is a priority. So we did look at prioritization and phasing, and one thing I wanted you to notice was that in this table, for example, the Aquatics Center, Community Center with Performing Arts Space, it's an A priority because the community has really expressed a desire for that. It's on the later end of the phasing. So priorities in phasing don't necessarily correspond precisely. The B priorities include improving existing parks, which are throughout all, and the new dog parks. And then the C priorities include the sports complex and the skate park. And that's our plan. We think that you will gain a lot of benefit out of this, as Barry said, using this plan as a tool, and coming back and revisiting it in five years and in 10 years to see what's changed and how it can better serve the public.
Thank you very much, Council. My guess is we have a lot of questions and discussion. Maybe we should take public comment real quick prior to that? Is that meaningful to everybody? With that, we'll ask Kelly Rubing. Please correct my pronunciation, sorry.
I'm Kelly Rubing. I live at 807 Cedar Street. And I understand that Barry is recommending that the Plan B adopted but removing. It sounds like he said on page 78, the private residences that are listed on the plan. I, myself, live in a home that is listed on that plan as potential open space. I've been on the Playground Committee for the new Burton Park Playground for the last two years, and we have worked really hard to come up with $900,000, and we're actually not quite there yet. And I can't understand how we could possibly afford to be purchasing homes that mostly cost more than that. As the plan calls for us, they become available. That just doesn't make any sense to me. It seems really unrealistic. I've been assured by city staff that this is sort of a wish list, but it does have real implications for those of us whose homes appear on this plan as a little shaded box for potential open space. You know, whether we have to disclose this, should we sell our home? Does somebody want to buy a house that's listed as potential open space versus one that's not? So it really has some serious implications for us. And just given the current fiscal climate and the outlook at the moment, I would really urge that you, if you accept the plan, do not include specific homes being listed, particularly the ones on Cedar Street and Royal Street, as potential open space. And I know there's a good dozen or so of my neighbors here tonight that would agree. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gier?
I'm John Gier. My pen ran out of ink, so it said lights up there, but I couldn't finish the rest of it. Actually, I'm Vice President of the San Carlos Tennis Club, and I just wanted to refer back to the way things were conducted as far as the survey is concerned. If the results from the community are as felonious as they are for the tennis courts, I think you've got a big problem on your hands because I don't think it's very accurate. The information on the tennis courts is absolutely upside down from what it is, and that's fact. The number of tennis courts in San Carlos is a minority as far as the other communities are concerned, whereas far as their survey shows, we are at more tennis courts than everybody else. That is totally untrue. I did the survey along with three other people. It's cut and dry what the tennis courts are, and they are all communities around the area. It's not even close to what they've reported. Now, we brought this out before, and it's like we don't exist. It's like nobody hears us. In the middle of working on this long-range plan, we lost the lights. We don't even have the lights to work with anymore in San Carlos because of another budget cut. I just heard tonight that you have a chance to increase the garbage fees by 5 percent, which is something normally happening for everybody, including your budget up to $230,000 is an increase, and we're looking at $14,000 as far as the lights are concerned. And by the way, I've waited almost 10 and a half weeks for anybody to get back to me on how the lights were calculated, what the wattage of the bulbs are, and how much electricity is actually being billed for. Nobody can give me that answer. And I think it's a long time to wait for everybody who came up with a number and doesn't have a number. That's my main serious things. We've handed in petitions. We've done all kinds of different programs. We contribute in donation, all types of facets to do with tennis in the community. We have one of the strongest tennis communities in the entire peninsula area. No question about it. Not reflected anywhere in the survey. Maybe the survey doesn't cover what it's supposed to do. Real question mark on that. The other things that we take a look at are the seniors. We have the biggest participation of seniors in one area, and that's between 50 and 65 that play tennis. Okay? We have, where's my point? My point is, we need more tennis courts. The Burton Courts are junk. Nobody plays down there. They don't play down there because they're in the wrong direction. The sun's over there all the time. They're always in rough shape. Some of the nets are missing. 97 percent of us won't even go down there to play. You're looking at a long-range plan. We give you ideas. We don't even hear back. Or we do hear back, but we don't, you know, we get the hello. You know, we've worked on this now.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your comments.
Yeah. We've been working on this now for almost nine months, and we had proposed to build 12 tennis courts up on the Crestview four-acre section. We've come up with all kinds of schematics, all kinds of drawings. We've done all kinds of things. Do we get considered? Do we even get mentioned? Do we even get talked about? Do we even get a place? No. We don't even get mentioned.
Okay. I'm going to have to.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you very much. And next, we have Karen Molinari.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Four years ago, I spoke to the existing council and Parks and Rec Commission regarding the need for a Parks Master Plan. It seemed to me at that time that we were working kind of in a piecemeal fashion to address our Parks and Rec needs. And I mentioned the famous quote, that if you fail to plan accordingly, then you plan to fail. I have to say, I am very pleased to see that the city embarked on a very inclusive planning process that engaged residents and that we have a plan to work from. And I really want to commend Barry and the staff and the consultants for doing that. And I have to say, I was pleased when I went to the G-PAC meeting and recently and heard other residents in the community talking about the need for more parks, pocket parks, more green space. That said, I have to make a few points. On page 57 of the plan, it says, "San Carlos residents have a desire for diverse Parks and Rec interests, and you need to provide a variety of classes, activities, and facilities." Page 60 and 61, "One in three children born after 2000 will develop diabetes, a trend directly related to the impact of loss of free time, 12 hours a week, eight hours of unstructured playtime and outdoor activities. Over the past two decades, participation in organized sports has doubled." This is from page 61. "However, sports participation does not ensure the necessary levels of physical activity required for health and physical fitness. Additionally, there's been a negative trend in youth sports that has been attributed to the win-at-all-cost competition. Dropout rate for children in youth sports is 70 percent by the age of 13. That's distressing. As a native San Carolin person who grew up here and is now here raising my children and who plays soccer and sports, I want more kids to participate in sports. At the same time, though, we need communities that support safe places for all children to play, for adults to walk, jog, ride a bike, and so on, not just organized sports." So the report also mentions that Parks and Recs are, you know, environmental stewards, which they are, and they enhance wildlife habitat, which they do. And California is an innovator in reversing environmental damage that we've done to our planet. With these premises, I ask you, I wonder why, we are prioritizing to serve one community use by increasing sports team playing time, by replacing oxygen-producing, planet-cooling natural grasses in all of our community parks with synthetic turf, a heat-producing, planet-warming plastic that contains dangerous chemicals known at levels, you know, to have dangerous levels for children.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
So the other question I have, the last question, I'll close, is also, why are we proposing as a top priority to spend $7 million to turf these three, four parks that will only save us $70,000 annually based on the tables that are here in 5-4 and A1-5?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Molinari.
At that rate, it would take us 100 years.
I've extended the time already. Thank you very much.
To make up the cost.
Anne Montalvo?
Good evening. My name is Anne Montalvo, and I am a resident on Cedar Street. And as one of my neighbors has already spoken about, our home has been identified on page 78 of the Parks and Recs Master Plan. And my home, as well as a couple of our neighbors, has been improperly identified as existing open space. And I know that Barry has suggested that our street and our homes be removed from the master plan, so I'm also requesting that you support that our property be removed because it will be detrimental if we do want to sell our homes. And I know that it was mentioned a few minutes ago that, as it was put, the one glitch, this will be removed from the city website, or that this will be removed, or hopefully it will be removed. But if it is removed, I would like to know when it will be removed from the websites, and if so, when, because, you know, it is detrimental, and it can affect our property value because it is sitting out there for the world to see. So if someone does go to the website and look what the city is planning in the future, and they see our homes, you know, it does affect our property value in the future. So I want to know what the city's plan is to do to correct this problem moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And that's the end of the public comment cards that I have for tonight. So staff, how do you, Mr. Weiss, Director Weiss, can you, want to give us an idea how you would like us to proceed tonight?
We, given the recommendation is that you accept this master plan. Once we have official acceptance of the master plan, or whatever the final form is, it really allows us to go out and do several things. It allows us to start planning, specifically through the Parks and Recreation Commission and the staff, to what we're going to implement. It allows us to go and seek funding. Many funding sources ask, do you have an accepted master plan? And we will be able to say that. It will help us in both those areas, operations and in funding. As mentioned earlier, I am recommending the change in the language in regards to the specific properties. I handed out the proposed language to you tonight. My recommendation would be that you accept the master plan with the change in that language. I refer into specific properties.
And just to help Council as we talk and negotiate this, when you talk about accepting as a plan, there's still, all of these projects come before Council as individually designed projects along the way. Is that right? Help me understand, and Council understand, the difference between a long-term planning document with sufficient amount of detail in it, and then how that gets revised as those come before Council?
Thank you. This document gives staff direction on what to start pursuing. But as you referenced, any capital project has to come to the city council for approval. So even though one of the very highest things in here is improving the playgrounds, well, if we pick, say, Crestview Park, and we want to build a new playground there, that's a capital project. That would come to this body for approval of that as a capital project. There's also reference in here that you can adjust some of these priorities depending if funding occurs. As mentioned, there's a wonderful community group working on increased dog park space, and we put this into the phasing of 2013 to 2016. But if they were to come to us and say, look, we've identified some, a couple sites, and everybody agrees it's a good idea, and we will help get the funding, you know, that might move that up, as long as it doesn't change something else. You may remember Bill Harris recommended not putting something in that was going to eliminate something else unless you could relocate it. So clearly, the city council always has control over any capital projects.
And I'm sorry, Counsel, just, I'm just trying to get some major, some broader clarification with something with regards to fields or some of the park preparation. When there's, this is an overall plan, but staff will still be doing analysis of the plan as it progresses, and if participation changes or something like that, then this plan can be adjusted? How does that work?
Yes. The way the plan is worded, it can be adjusted. Things could change drastically 12 months from now in regards to materials, in regards to cost, in regards to need, as you mentioned. There is, you mentioned athletic fields. There is a need for increased playtime on athletic fields. That could change. Other factors could change. We could find out information about synthetic turf or natural turf. You have before you, coming up next, consideration of approving a contract to an environmental review of synthetic turf at Highlands. That may indicate that that's not a good idea, in which case we would proceed in a different direction. This establishes a direction and a priority. Probably the main thing this does is it allows staff to focus on a direction, and people may, you know, we have lots of competing interests. People may say, well, I really want this, I really want this, I really want this. And we are safely able to say, that's good, and we'll try and get that, but we're going to focus on the priorities established in the plan because that's what's reflective of community interest.
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions for Dr. Weiss? Ms. Royce?
Comments, just general?
Sure. Yeah, I think this is a fairly lengthy document, so I think it's wide open.
Yeah, well, again, I agree with a lot of people who spoke of the, this master plan is a lot of work. It will have value for years to come. It's organized, a lot of good quality data, and a lot of the financial stuff also will help. Of course, with our situation, if we're talking about $20 million of capital improvements and, what, 50, 60 to $140 million of acquisitions, we may have to wait a while. But yet, let's get it on paper, and we'll go through it. Personal request is, I would like to change the name from a final draft master plan to the Park Master Plan. Having the word "park" is the emphasis because I've been confused over the last year or two hearing about a master plan. It really is the Park Master Plan. "Master Plan" sounds like it's a little bit more encompassing of the whole city, like a general plan.
Well, if I may respond to that just real quickly.
Sure.
You see at the top where it says Final Draft Master Plan, and that was for simplicity's sake and reference. Right below the picture is the formal name of the plan, City San Carlos Master Plan for Parks, Open Space Buildings, and Other Recreational Facilities. So it's more encompassing. Clearly, if the city council wished to call this just the Parks Master Clearly, if the city council wished to call this just the Park Master Plan, we could do that.
I would just like to have a terminology that council and Park and Rec and staff, when we speak of it, we, we know what we're talking about. To me, Park Master Plan is really what this is, not a master plan. The, I have, yeah, three or four thoughts here. One is, it's quite interesting how, one thing that it doesn't cover, but it does a little bit, is just making sure that we maintain our current facilities. They get a lot of wear and tear on our fields and so forth. What really came out is our open space and our trails, what, eight miles of trails, which is very positive. One question I would like to ask is, I know this is related more to open space and parks on trails, but I feel also there's a need to, connectivity, getting people to and from downtown. And so that, to me, that, those trails, those bicycle paths and those trails, getting people for the harvest, you know, the, on the Thursday nights, every Thursday in summer, getting into Burden Park for concerts, getting people to walk and to bike and walk with their strollers and their families and so forth. How do we get that little attachment? Is there a way to add that into this program, or is it, I, I understand this is truly just parks, but is there a way to make sure that we're also looking at connectivity to our downtown, from east side and west side, north and south?
It would actually be very simple. The current Trails Committee for the Connection Plan is discussing that very exact thing. So if the council wished to, you could direct us to put a line in the plan saying to pursue that connectivity.
Okay.
Absolutely, that would be easy.
And I'm not sure, I'm not saying that we need to pursue it here, I would just like to have someone, I, I think it's a priority to pick up that other piece.
And it is being pursued through the Trails Committee.
Okay. Yeah, I've always been one to, we have facilities maximizing the use of our facilities. One of our speakers talked about the youth center and the strict guidelines we have. That's for youth, adult community center is for adults. But we do need to be thinking creativity on, if there's aerobic programs that could be done at the youth center for seniors, I'm not recommending we do that, I'm just using it as an example, from eight to twelve, when the, the youth people are in school, you know, during the school year. And yet, the adult community center is allowed as a use for our youth, for lunches, or playing pool, or, I mean, I'm miscoating it here, but there may be some kind of sharing. We may not need aerobics in both places. Maybe there's a way to soften the, and I know there's a lot of history and so forth, it's a big, tall, tall fence, but to offer some flexibility and, and some improvement in, in maximizing the use of our facilities, so we don't have to put aerobics in every building. We, we do some sharing on that point. Next point is, and we do cover maintenance, but we don't talk a lot about it here, and I, I think this is maybe my most important or recommendation, to me personally, is that thinking about how we operate our facilities in the future. I know that, for example, the city of Monterey, I may be wrong with my facts here, but I believe the city built what would be equivalent of the Pacific Athletic Club, a workout facility with a pool, and it's a city building, it's a city facility for all that, as a community center, workout, pool, everything. And then they actually contract out every five years, they do a request for proposal for someone to come in and run the facility. The city basically gets a return on assets, based on all the fees that are collected, but a separate business basically runs the facility. And so it's, it's a nice joint partnership between businesses. There are a lot of businesses that run golf courses and, and workout facilities and so forth, that maybe we can't handle, but maybe if we have the land and we could get some money for a, a building, there may be a good way then to not only save on how to operate it, but actually generate a lot of revenue from a building like that. Even the example where we've talked to Matt, Councilmember Matt Grocott and myself, in the last two weeks, have met with one of the tennis club people, Jeff Peterson, we had a speaker this evening from the tennis club, entertaining, just throwing out some ideas. Well, maybe, you know, we turned lights off and so forth, but maybe next year, a year after, we could consider, what if we retain ownership of the tennis courts, but the tennis club or some other organization steps up and makes an offer to say, hey, we'll, we'll run the operational, we'll run tennis courts, we'll do the scheduling, we'll do some maintenance, we'll give the city a little bit of a return on asset, return on investment to use your facility, we'll get the lights back on, and we generate, you know, two to three times a volume of maximizing use of our tennis courts by having an organization with its own board of directors, people who actually know the sport better than, than us. And I could go down the list of activities where it's, there was a term up there on one of the slides, volunteer-based, well, these people are volunteers, but they basically have an interest in that sport. There are skate parks that aren't only volunteer-based, there are actually businesses now in the state of California who operate, they build and operate indoor skate parks for profit. And I've shared the video with, with Barry, it's, if you were to go on the video clip right now, right now, at ten o'clock at night, it's got a bunch of kids and adults there on skateboards doing incredible things with these things, and so...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, are, are you talking about including the stuff into the master plan at this point, or just talking about new ideas you want to continue to discuss? I'm just trying to, I want to make sure that, we have such an expansive document, I want to make sure that we stay on point.
So I, yes, I would like to then recommend an inclusion on, on, on the future, if we're looking at the next twenty years, I think we need to address some different ways of operating our facilities, and these are good examples that aren't mentioned in the plan.
In the next twelve years?
Twelve years, yeah, to two thousand twenty, which is what the plan goes to. And, and then my, my last point is continuing to partner with, whether or not it's Sequoia High School, their Harrington Theater for, a theater, whether or not it's U.S. Forest Service for some parkland for camping in the summer, Redwood Shores for a theater or a pool or other types of activities, just trying to share with, with other cities that do have these facilities, we don't have the luxury to have, but to do, to do those sorts of things. And I don't hear any mention of, of that. So, so in summary, the trails shouldn't be changed here. My, my main point is how we operate these facilities and partnering a little bit more expansion discussion of that, I think can help the Park Master Plan. Thank you.
Counsel, more remarks?
Mr. Mayor, let's see, a couple of quick points. I did attend the Redwood City meeting last week when they were discussing the open space initiative, so I understand the passions that people have when they start to hear open space, so I'm just pulling this up. This is the redacted page showing that those specific houses and everything else have been crossed off, and that is the only way that we will vote on this, or at least that's the only way that I will support it. Crossed off. Don't have to applaud, that's, that's what we're doing.
Good job.
It's my first applause line. I also wanted to say that I do like the fact that trails is up there, because Mr. David just beams every time you say trails and hiking. It's a lovely thing. One point of, I guess, concern that I would like to just explore as we move forward is the Park and Rec Foundation and, how should I describe it, the role of city employees within the foundation and the fundraising that goes on. I want to be supportive of the foundation, I want to be supportive of our employees and the overall mission. I'd just like to see how that's divided. I, I think when I was looking at the budget and who was working where, from my perspective, it was a little confusing trying to figure out who might be doing what. So I'd like some clarification as we move forward of fundraising, which has been addressed in this plan very strongly. And lastly, I, I would like to commend everybody, I did go to a few of the meetings related to this, it is a, it was a lot of work that people put together, I do want to commend everybody who did it, and I'm looking forward to the Park and Rec Commission over the next year. I'm certain that Director Weiss will get his wish, that this will be a dog-eared, very well-loved document, especially as we look forward to the next budget year. So, those are my comments.
In the interest of time, I mean, this is a huge document, and you could go over page by page and add possibly things or subtract things. But I did want to make one point, and again, just, just as, as a point, counterpoint I get with, with my fellow council member, I'm a little concerned about volunteers taking over the tennis courts, because then we're gonna have volunteers take over the baseball fields, and then they're gonna take over the soccer fields, and all of a sudden, we're gonna have seventeen different groups sort of controlling the Park and Rec facilities in our city. And I'm just, I would walk very, I mean, personally, I would, I would tread very softly on, on that, that point. I think it's a good idea to think outside the box like that and go up with some concepts, but to have control over a public facility with a, a group of volunteers could, could possibly, you know, have some, some issues down the road, but...
Just a question regarding a community center with a swimming pool, a workout facility, would you go for that?
That would be one that I would possibly, again, again, the public, when we compete with private industry, whatever it is, I mean, I think you have, again, I, I'm not saying no to anything, I'm just saying that we have to be very careful that when government gets involved in a, in a, in either a for-profit or a, a thing where we're really competing directly against other interests, so I, that's the only point I would make. But I have to commend Mr. Weiss, as has been said earlier by other council members, I can't even fathom putting together something like this. I think it's, they've done a wonderful job of, again, giving us a guide, as the mayor said, this is a guide, this isn't gospel, we, we, every item that's come up here that will impact us, we will, the city council will vote on every single item, because it's, they're all involves dollars. And I think it's a great guide, and I think everybody who worked on it should be complimented, and I'll turn it over to the mayor.
So, I have a couple slightly just more difficult concepts. I mean, I guess, for me, I echo the compliments of the work that's gone into the draft and the amount of work Park and Rec Commission, staff, and everybody has done certainly is comprehensive and, and, and it, you know, I guess I sort of alluded to, part of my central, not so much a dilemma, but just to making sure that we're, we're pretty clear about what, what the plan represents, because although there's a lot of analysis that's gone into the plan, there's also, as, as things transpire over time, like, I'm not sure the council's ever sat back and said, how many synthetic fields does, do we need as far as our athletic fields in town? Like, done our own comprehensive analysis and said, what, what is the true goal there? I think Director Weiss, which you alluded to, which is, as things progress, we take a look at the plan and see is, is that still the right work plan and the right action plan in the master plan? So it's sort of like tracking our progress, coming back and making sure that we're, that maybe, in certain cases, we're not doing more than is necessary. Now, these things are all gonna kind of merge one into another here a little bit. There's, there's a major feasibility issue here, right? I'm not the only one that read this and went, holy smokes. And without trying to throw a major curveball in here, lots of baseball analogies this time of year, it, this is twelve years from now, this is mid-year two thousand eight, right, and we're talking about two thousand twenty. I've been involved in the city fields discussions, Park and Rec discussions and everything for over almost nine years now, and I, I just, it comes back to a reality check on whether or not this is a realistic timetable. And I believe that we have everything identified in a really comprehensive way. I honestly, and I hate to be negative, but I honestly don't think that there's a prayer of achieving a lot of this in the next twelve years, to the degree that, with the funding that we have available. We've just gone through, in the last decade, a positive revenue cycle prior to the last couple of years, and now we're really starting to deal with, you know, come to grips with what's really necessary here in a funding level. I love many, many, many aspects of this plan, but I think we all have, we, we just have to ask ourselves, what's, there's a bit of a reality check in this. And, and, you know, I was part of some of the early visioning process of this, and I love the visioning process, but I also think there, the reality is, is vastly different. So, the one thing I would like just to consider, and I'd love to get your response on this, Director Weiss, is should this really be a longer-term plan than a twelve-year plan?
We actually wrestled with that ourselves. A couple of things, one of them, that one of the speakers said, we don't want to be guilty of failing the plan, so this creates a plan for us. And you mentioned the idea of periodic updates, and that's really the way you address it. To project more than the twelve years puts you into the realm of, do you really know what's gonna happen beyond that? I mean, twelve years is a long time. So, you, what you do is you take a snapshot today, that's why they use two thousand eight prices, you take a snapshot of what the community is saying today, and then you intentionally build in periodic updates and review of the plan. This is not something that, that just staff and the commission takes and runs for twelve years. At the end of the twelve years, we come back to council and say, okay, we accomplished this and not this. Really, about every three to five years, we bring, for example, Bill Harris' design back, and they do an update. And, okay, what's changed, what has not changed, what's the cost, and then you add another three years on, so it's a, it's a living document and essence.
I, I understand that, my question, but, but we don't have a milestone schedule that's going along with the plan at this point in time that shows those review milestones. And perhaps that's something that could be a follow-up item, but because it's such a vast plan, and because twelve years is, if you look at our last twelve years, I don't think that, in better economic times, in my opinion, that we've accomplished a third of what's encompassed in this plan. So I guess, I, I love how comprehensive it is, I respectfully disagree that twelve years is the right amount of time. I just, in my opinion, it should be a longer period of time because of how comprehensive this is. I would love for, I would also like to see us come back with, what are those milestone check-ins, just so we can see, how are those priorities, just like with our strategic plan, we come back with, here's the action items in the next couple of years, and I think that that's something then, commission can then have, develop their yearly work plans, staff can develop their yearly work plans, and council knows what to expect, and the public knows what to expect. I frankly feel like that the city should aggressively plan to make these things happen. I think it's gonna have to come with some sort of a revenue measure, perhaps a specific general obligation bond when it comes to the community facilities. And I think this community would be better for it, so don't, don't read my, my reality check into this as lack of enthusiasm for some of the elements of this. The other, the other comment I wanted to make is, because of how creative we have to be with our resources and how tight funding and resources are for us, when we have a property, like the North Crestview property, we should be moving on that. We, talk, I mean, that's available property, either to trade or develop or do something with. And, you know, we talk about, you know, a sports complex or acquiring more land or whatever, well, those are difficult plans to put together, everybody knows that. So when we, when we have something, I think, you know, that's something at least we can start to move on. And I know over the years, we've had a lot of discussions with the Black Mountain Water property in there. And, you know, I'd also like to see us keep that conversation going, because that's a jewel right in the middle of the city. And, and just, by the way, on the North Crestview property, I realize it's not centrally located, but, you know, beggars can't be choosers, and we don't have land, everybody, and we don't have money, everybody. So let's, I think if we want to get moving, we should get moving on something, and it may not be ideal, but it's something. As far as Randy's point, I think that when it comes to a new community facility, like a pool or something like that, there's other communities that have had a sort of privatized, you know, a lease service agreement or something... sort of privatized, you know, a lease service agreement or something for a number of years. I think you analyze that as it comes up. I'm not sure I necessarily put it into the plan. I think it's thinking that we should adopt for those kind of, the bigger community projects. But I also agree with Vice Mayor Grisilli, which is, if we get too many ad hoc governing councils for all the different public facilities, I think we can spend more time administering that than it would be to keep it under control and in the way it's been well shepherded over the years, in my opinion. So, I guess, you know, specifically, I would actually be interested to hear council's opinion on lengthening the time on this plan. My suggestion would be to lengthen it by at least five to ten years, to feel better about the feasibility of it. I would be interested in, if Barry, because it's a living plan, it's coming, and perhaps not tonight, and I would be comfortable adopting something tonight, but maybe to come back with a milestone schedule on checking on the plan where we understand what the actions are being undertaken with, so we know what the schedule is and what the plan is, and where the money's coming from and all that, on a somewhat regular basis.
I'd be very much in favor of doing that. In fact, would it help also just to kind of do a forecast projection of Park and Lou fees and Measure G, and we have the foundation, and then what would be the options for some of the, and we have to start looking at a funding table to start matching what the capital program's going to be, as far as just a real broad one-page summary, as part of that?
Well, I would say also, you know, along with that, I would, what the mayor said is, I think, whether it's the, as we go with, you know, our general, our plan that we have every six months, and we come back and we have milestones, I think six months is too soon. But I think a year would certainly be a good milestone time, every year, literally. And the other thing is, is that we pick out, as the mayor indicated, triage, or we want to call it, one or two items that we want to try to concentrate on. Now, the Park and Rec Foundation did a great job, and it took about a year and a half. Am I about to raise the money, Barry, for the, or am I a little bit short on that, for the improvement Center Burton there, for the?
It's really not apples and apples there, because the foundation was just being formed.
No, I understand that. But I'm just saying, to raise the money, it was, it took about a year to ra, a year and a half to raise the money, is my point, or?
Actually, once the foundation got involved, and we got ramped up, it was less than that.
Okay. So, let's say it was nine months to do it. So, let's assume nine to twelve months for the next project. We have to, or Park and Rec, somebody has to identify the next project. Because, I mean, it's, we raised eight hundred thousand dollars in nine months, that's great. Whether we'll be able to do that again for the next one, we have to community, have community support and people buy into the, to the program. So, if we don't identify it, I think it's going to be harder to raise some of the funds for that. And I think that's where you just, you go down and you say, "Okay, we're going to do this, we want to, we want to try to raise the money for this." That's got to be consensus of Park and Rec's recommendations, the community, and this council. So, I think those are really good things that otherwise will never, I don't know that I want to extend it out five years, because to me, it's like, I mean, I could make a case, this would be thirty years, depending on if you may, if you, if you have one project every year, and you're raising nine hundred thousand dollars or a million, some of these projects unfortunately cost a lot more than that. So, I don't know whether it would be possible to raise two or three million dollars in a year to really get it going. I mean, it could, because it could, it could catch everybody's imagination and go, "Yeah, we want a community pool, we've got a place to put it, we want to raise the money, let's," whether it's a general obligation bond, or whether it's a donation or whatever, all of a sudden catches fire and it goes, "I don't want to denigrate that we couldn't do it. I think we could, it's just a matter, it's got to be identified." And there's so many things in this, it's almost overwhelming. And I think we just have to focus more, and I'm not being critical of the report, because it's supposed to be a master plan for a myriad of time. But I think that's why we need the milestones back and say, "Okay, we're going to work on this for the next year, and this is where the funds are and going."
And I think that milestone would focus the priority. Because my guess is, again, not to be so negative, my guess is, there's more than can be done, given the current schedule that's in here, the idea for the funding schedule. So, what's going to happen in a year is, okay, well, we can actually do one of these four things. And now, whether or not that's funding toward a community facility, working on athletic field, working on the phase two of Arguello Park, working on the trail system, is going to be the focused discussion that we're all going to have. And I think that's the right discussion to be having. And the only other thing I wanted to say is, perhaps it's a backhanded compliment to say that I think it could go out five or ten years. I think this is a great, comprehensive look of the state of the parks in San Carlos. And I think it'll take a very long time to achieve this, but I think it's right. And I don't think it's going to change dramatically in the next five or ten years. I think this plan's good for, to go right along with the general plan, in my opinion. That would be-
Mr. Chair, I mean, do we need a motion to approve, maybe it's time to make a motion, or?
Sure.
Everybody had their shot?
Yep.
So, we, I make a motion to accept the plan with the changes, as a council member, Ahmad, so rightfully stands up and takes out all these items, specific items, out of this. Is there anything we want to add to it? Do you want to add the milestone situation somewhere in here where we want to have a yearly milestone or a yearly, and I'm looking to you, if you vehemently disagree with some of this stuff, I'd like to hear about it, but-
I think, I think the milestone thing is a great idea. We had that in mind anyway, and I think you need to do the milestones. You don't want to lose track.
What else do we want to add or subtract? I'm sorry, we did, we did that, we subtracted all that?
I would, I'm sorry, Randy.
No, I'm just asking the residents, if the residents would like to see a copy of this, they're welcome to come up.
Well, everything, all the individual, what specifically we're doing here is, we're eliminating all the individual, specific things. They're all gone. They're not, they're just, they're gone. So, that's it. End of conversation.
And we're also recommending an addition of that one paragraph that says, "Continue to monitor opportunities and as sites are identified, do an analysis."
That could be any city, any part of any-
Anywhere.
Anywhere, so it doesn't specifically identify any, any single parcel.
Again, and whether or not this goes in motion or not, I would, I would say we need to add eight years to this plan. I would, instead of twenty, I would make it 2028, make it a twenty-year plan. And I think that'll actually help staff not have to do another parks master plan. I know this was not cheap. But again, in my nine years of experience, we've accomplished not two percent of what's in this plan. Maybe that's a little rough, four percent. So, I would-
Okay, well, everybody supports it, then I support it too, then, because there's three, I can count. So, I'll make that part of my motion, that we make it from a twelve to twenty-year situation.
Second.
Is there any other items that we need to add to the motion, that people want to add or subtract to the motion?
I think that's what I have. Comfortable with that?
Do you have that?
Yes, got it.
Okay.
Staff?
Second.
Any other discussion? Any other clarifications?
I'm comfortable with everything.
Okay.
Ms. Bowman?
Councilmember Ahmad.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry. Again, just to do the merrily thing here as well, it is a really comprehensive plan, thanks to consultants, staff, Park and Rec Commission. I know a lot of heart and souls have gone into this, and there's a lot of emotion involved in it. Appreciate your work, crowning achievement near the end of your esteemed career. Thanks to, for all your staff and all the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'll go on to nine F, the consideration of awarding contract Pacific Municipal Consultants for Certification of California Environmental Quality Act SEQA for the Highland turf project.
Good evening. Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. This is an implementation of, a part of the master plan. In April, you asked us to start the work for consideration of the preparation of an environmental document for synthetic field at Lower Highland Field. We put out requests for proposals and are recommending to you tonight, entering into contract with Pacific Municipal Consultants. Their approach is a phased one, based on your input and the issues that were addressed in the public process regarding this park. The phases will be up to three parts. The first would be to do an analysis that just identifies what all the environmental issues are. And under the California Environmental Quality Act, that's called an initial study. That, if you enter into contract this week, then that would be before you, probably by late October. You would be, at that point, asked to then direct us, based on that environmental analysis, whether or not you'd like to choose to pursue mitigated negative declaration, which has also been scoped in this particular contract, or if you would like further analysis and scoping for the preparation of an environmental impact report. If you choose the mitigated negative declaration, phase two, we may be back to you as soon as December with a decision on that environmental document. The cost for phase one is a little over fifty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand ten. The cost to pursue phase two would be sixty-six, sixty-eight, six-six-zero. The funding would be the Park and Lou fund. We asked the bidders to bring to us a proposal that was multidisciplinary, and particularly with expertise in biolog, or bacterial contaminants. And this firm did bring that expertise. They also have experience in synthetic turf field parks, as well as many other park planning and implementation projects. So, tonight, we suggest that you approve this contract. That concludes my report.
Counsel, questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a general comment that I stand by comments that I made previously regarding the turf on Highlands, that we just went through a park master plan, and one of the biggest things that they discussed in it was the need for additional park space. I still believe that Terre Linda is the place to go, as it does something that putting turf on Highlands doesn't do, which is it gives us additional park space. There are legitimate issues and legitimate challenges of working in Terre Linda and with the school board. I acknowledge those. I would never say that it's the path of least resistance or the easiest thing to do. But I still believe that-
I'm just going to try to bring you to the agenda item tonight, please.
I'm going to vote against it.
Question, Ms. Nelson. What's the timeframe on this? Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
The timeframe would be to begin work immediately and be back to you by the end of October with the initial study, and a decision point whether you want to pursue mitigated negative declaration, in which case, that work would begin immediately and be before you in December. If you chose at the end of October to do an environmental impact report, we'd have to come back with you with another scope of work, with another fund recommendation.
And what's the time if we did a full EIR?
Full EIR is generally about six months, from the time you begin that work.
Could be next April.
Yes, yes.
Next April, okay. All right, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, just to that point, so if we go this route, and then we decide to go the full IRR, EIR, is that then another six months from that point?
No. I think we could, certainly, the work is very, very similar. What you would do in making the choice to do the full EIR is probably you suggest to us other issues that we have not identified. If you do, we might add more months. Part of the EIR extension is there are mandatory review requirements. It gets out to review, people are allowed to respond to it, you have to prepare a final. So, it's really a lot of administrative work that adds to the time of an impact-
Right.
-environmental impact report.
Thank you. Councilor Rice?
So, there are, I think, a couple of studies that I've read about, and I'm aware of, that are taking place with regard to synthetic surfaces, plain fields.
Yes.
Will those be incorporated in the analysis, looked at? Have we, do we have any of those results to date?
What I know from the consultants that talk to us is that much of what's on, that was brought to you in public comment is based on an old kind of turf product that was used. There are new kinds of turf product which have different factors.
I'll only cut you off, because that's not actually my question.
Okay.
My, and I don't want to, I'm not asking this in a pejorative fashion whatsoever. We, there are, I think, a federal study and a state study, I believe, that are both being done on the modern field turfed. And what I'm wondering is, are we tracking those?
Yes, yes. And we will insist that this firm do that.
Right. And the timing of it-
That's what they have proposed.
I would also, I would also propose, and again, if I missed the detail on this, my apologies, but the timing of this should, in, very specifically, I think, try to find out when those results are going to be available, so we can incorporate those into this report. If, if one's coming out, you know, January fifteenth, and we're going to get this report in the end of December, that would be not a good idea. So, I just, I want to track those, because I think that they are important, and they are going to be inclusive, and I think it is going to be the modern turf. Certainly, one of the major concerns any of us would have is if there's, if there's any safety issue whatsoever with this turf, then, you know, that's a major, major issue. So, for all of us in moving forward in something like this, we have to understand exactly what the state-of-the-art analysis of this, of these plain surfaces are.
What we could do is send at least a follow-up memo to you of what we know now about the status of those studies and how they would integrate with this proposal.
That would be great. My guess is also, because those are private companies that are looking to make a profit, that if indeed there are some issues with their turf, that they're going to be starting to also look at ways that maybe they're going to be changing what the components of that turf are. So, if we can be, also be tracking whatever those changes are, so, so we're up to speed on that, that would, obviously, it'd fall into mitigation measures, but all of that's going to be important. It's a highly charged issue.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nelson, I apologize. In effect, really, I asked, when, this is going to be the end of October, you're saying this report is going to be given back to us?
The initial study-
This initial study, right, the end of October.
Would take about six weeks, so that puts us the end of October.
Okay. And then, and through the mayor's question also, I mean, the reason it's going to take another six months is because of legal timing things, where you have to get responses. And, I mean, a lot of this work's going to, a lot of this, if we want to do a full EIR, a lot of the work's already going to be done by this report, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's more the, it's more the, you have to go now forty-five days, you have to go forty-five days, you have to do this kind of stuff.
That's correct.
Not so much the work, but it's the time.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Absolutely, very good. Any other questions or comments for staff? Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the contract to Pacific Municipal Consultants for the certification of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA for the Highland Park Turf Project.
I'll second that.
Ms. Bowman?
Councilmember Ahmad.
Yeah.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes. And with that, I believe that's our last item for tonight, and we will adjourn the meeting.